Let's call the meeting to order. We'll call the September 25th, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Please remain standing for the invocation. On this day in 1957, nine African-American students entered the all-white Central High School in Little Rock, Arkansas, under the escort from the U.S. Army's 101st Airborne Division by order of the President of the United States. Although this remains an indelible image in our national consciousness, the struggle for civil rights for all began and ended at the ballot box with the right of every eligible citizen to vote without any hindrance. It is only appropriate that today is National Voter Registration Day, and I ask that we pray and give thanks for all that we have been blessed with and been able to achieve through this most important duty in civic sacrament, the right to vote. Let us pray that we continue to live up to the values and principles of our predecessors who never gave up and continue to fight to ensure that every man and woman had the right to have their voice heard on Election Day. We pray and thank all those who have defended this right and continue to defend it and ask that they be kept from harm. May this right never be taken for granted and may it be used to improve our neighborhoods, communities, city, state, and nation. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
And may we have your report.
The agenda for the September 25th, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 20th, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, next, please.
Next is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of October 2nd, 2012.
Ms. Viers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for October 2nd, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon commencing at 3:00 P.M., we do have a Glendale City Council and Glendale Successor Agency meeting. We have two items, Director of Community Development, this is regarding review of the project objectives and update of financial impacts of the Americana brand. Director of Community Development, this is regarding meet and confer with the State Department of Finance. Also that afternoon, we do have a meeting of the Glendale City Council, and this is a special meeting, this is Director of Human Resources and Administrative Services Finance regarding employee retirement incentive program. That evening commencing at 6:00 P.M. for the Glendale City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items, Director of Public Works, design of the Fairmont Avenue Park and Ride facility in connection with Spec. Number 3492. Fire Chief, this is regarding destruction of records at the Verduco Fire Communications Center. Director of Community Services and Parks, installation and removal of LED holiday lighting and decorations on Brand Boulevard, trees, and holiday banners. We have two items under action, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, proposed amendment to Chapter 13.16 relating to water service connection within Glendale city limits, and Director of Human Resources, salary supplement and continuation of certain benefits for city employees who are members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and are called up for active duty. And lastly, we have a hearing, Director of Community Development, this is regarding proposed ordinance establishing the North Cumberland Heights Historic District Relay Zone. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Next item at 3:00 B. is proclamation designating the month of October 2012 as Walktober, International Walk to School Month.
I have a beautiful proclamation here, and I see a lot of very well-behaved young people here tonight, girls and boys. So I'm going to read the proclamation first. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activities into daily routines. Driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. So an important role for parents, caregivers, and communities is to teach children about pedestrian safety, about the health and environmental risk related to physical inactivity and air pollution, and to become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trips to school each day. Parents, educators, community members, and leaders can support safer routes to school programs which enable children to safely walk and bicycle in your communities. So children, parents, community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school, evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October is Walktober, International Walk to School Month. And all of these young people look like they're in pretty good shape. They're either walking to school or just generally exercising.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, and City of Glendale staff. Thank you for this proclamation. As you know, International Walk to School Day is part of our Glendale Safe Road to School Program and is our biggest encouragement event of the year. This is our third year of citywide participation. Our theme is Walktober, Safe Road to School, uh, sorry, Get to School on Your Own Power, Kid Power. As of today, we have 33 schools registered, all 29 GUSD schools, and four private schools. This will be the largest Walk to School Day event in Southern California. Just to remind you, we walk to enhance the health of our children, to improve air quality and environment, to create safer conditions for walking and bicycling, and to teach our children lifelong habits for having a healthy and safe lifestyle. On October 3rd, please join your children, your neighbor's children, your community, and walk to school on your own power. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And my name is Sam Tesian. I'm ASB president at Glendale High School, and I'm a senior.
Thank you very much, Sam. And I'd like to have some of the other young people give us their names and maybe where they go to school. Shouldn't be too difficult.
Don't be shy.
Go ahead, just go up to, you can put the mic down a little bit. There you go.
I'm Macy Armstrong, and I go to school at Arti White Elementary.
Very good.
My name is Lily Armstrong, and I go to school at Arti White Elementary.
My name is Grace Anderson, and I also go to school at Arti White.
My name is Daniel Armstrong, and I also go to school at Arti White.
I think everybody goes Arti White. Go ahead.
My name is Max Kovak, and I go to Babo Elementary.
Oh. Let's go to testing.
My name is Sophia Ferstein, and I go to Babo Elementary.
My name is Julia Forster, and I go to Montevista Elementary.
My name is Tiffany, and I go to Arti White.
My name is Nicole Finneas, and I go to Arti White Elementary.
And the little one. The little is the proclamation.
My name is Audrey, and I go to school at Arti White.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. And I also want to recognize Ry Berg, who's very instrumental in putting these programs together not only in Glendale but all over Southern California.
Natalie.
And Natalie also.
Actually, why don't you, Kara, do you want to introduce all the grown-ups that are there?
Uh, sure.
Sure, I think most of you know me, I'm Kara Sergiel. I've been the parent champion for our Safe Road to School Program here in Glendale for almost four years now. I have Natalie Winyarski from Walkbike Glendale, Ry Berg from Walkbike Glendale, and also from the Safe Road to School National Partnership. I have parent John Finneas, Officer Matt Zakarian, and also Dr. Ander Lee from GUSD, all here supporting this effort.
Very good. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Mr. Weaver.
Just a comment before you all walk off. Glendale High School, long night, too. Congratulations. Now, you little kids, I went to Glen Oaks Elementary, and when I drive down there every morning, I see a lot of young folks walking with their mother or father, or both, to school, from up the canyon down. You know what it tells me? You kids are getting your parents exercise. Keep it up, they'll get in shape, too. Okay?
Ms. Friedman.
I just want to thank, I want to thank, first of all, all the kids that participate because you are the ones that make this happen, of course. You're the ones that are walking, so thank you. You're setting such a great example for all the other kids in all the schools, so congratulations to you. And also to all of the parents that are involved, and to everyone at Walkbike Glendale, because this program has grown so much over the years. I think the first time I walked with you was two years ago or three years ago, and there was a lot of people, but I've been doing it every year since, and there's so many kids now walking and biking that it's just wonderful to see. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, they put together walking school buses, they call it, and walking bike buses where they go in groups. So even if you can't go with your kids, you can arrange for them to go in one of these buses so they can go with a whole group of kids and an adult at the same time. So if you haven't done this before, please do, and not just once, one time a year, but they do this all throughout the year. So hopefully, we can get more and more parents and kids involved, and I will be there with you next week. I'm not sure what school, you'll have to let me know, but I'm looking forward to walking with all you kids, and you can show me the best way to walk to your school. Thanks.
Okay, go do your homework.
What's next?
Presentation and appointments. If there's nothing else, the next item is City Council and Staff comments, but I believe there's one commendation that we have to present.
I'll do it.
Okay. So City Council and Staff comments.
Okay. And Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, just, I'd just like to ask staff again, we, I'll try to talk over, we had the discussion about dogs and Renee from Pet Rush making proposals to us, but I think we left it undone, in other words, what can he do to help the city out? I know certain things like the enforcement of codes and stuff he can't do. I'd like to see on the agenda what things he can do for the community as a whole that are within our purview. That could be agendized.
Mr. Menuchyan.
Yes, I was out exercising over the weekend as well. I was riding my bike up the mountain of Sunshine, Sunshine Canyon, and Sunshine Canyon was graded again. Who grades these fire roads? Do we grade it, or is it?
Sometimes it's us, Mr. Menuchyan, sometimes it's the county.
It's the county?
The county.
There was one area which, on my way down, it looked like a fire road, but it was, it ended on a cliff, and I couldn't tell the difference whether it was a fire road or was not because it was recently graded.
Right to the cliff.
Yes. And it's dangerous, I thought I'd bring it up, and if we can put maybe a couple of rocks or a sign there saying that, watch out, there's a cliff, I won't have to kind of slam on my brakes so hard next time. And over the weekend, Saturday, I'll be at Sycamore Canyon, if anyone's interested in mountain biking. You can meet me there. You can find the details on Corbo's website, on their calendar, 8:30 Saturday morning, I'll be out riding. So join me for exercise.
Well, it was a lot of activity this weekend, I just wanted to mention some of the meetings and activities that I went to, really to congratulate the organizers and to, you know, let people know what happens in Glendale every week. Last week, I attended along with our city manager and Steve Zern. What is your official title now? You have so many. It's General Manager of GWP and Director of Public Works. We have to find a shortened.
Correct. We're working on it.
Shortened thing for that. So we attended the Glen Oaks Homeowners Association annual meeting, and Mr. Zern did a really great and interesting presentation. He managed to make a presentation about the landfill, really fascinating, and people were really interested, so I want to thank them for the invitation. It was very exciting to attend along with some of my colleagues up here, the grand reopening of the Sealy's Building, which, as many of you know, is a signature building in the south part of the city that really greets people as they come into town. It's a historic structure, and it's been sitting vacant and derelict for many years, and the owners have spent some time now renovating the building, and it's been reopened as Flex Space, Live Work Space, and it's absolutely beautiful inside and out, and they have, I think it's 30 temporary leases right now to artists in the area, and I think it's open every day, so you can actually go and see these art exhibits and purchase art if you so choose, and jewelry and crafts. And then they also have permanent leases going in upstairs of arts-related companies. And this is all part of what we've been doing and partially a result of the San Fernando Creative Corridor Incentive Program, which this council approved two years ago, and it's really been wonderful to watch these creative companies move into the area. I think it's been very successful. I hope we can, in the age of post redevelopment, continue as many of those incentives as possible, and I want to just tell the community that it's great to have this historic structure back in action. Last Friday, I attended, and I think Mr. Najarian did as well, we visited the two temporary parks that were put up as part of Parking Day by Walkbike Glendale with cooperation from the L.A. Bicycle Coalition, and also Armstrong Nursery here in Glendale evidently donated a lot of items. So this is a, really, I think it's a statewide effort to show what happens when you remove a few parking spaces, remove a few cars, and turn that land over to be used as public space. And so they had two different displays on Brand Avenue, and it was a great group of young people who put the installations together, and I want to thank them for that. I attended last week the ribbon cutting for the new Starbucks in Montrose, which, if some of you know, is right across the street from the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, so we definitely have some coffee wars going on. But from what I observed, there's more than enough people who want to be caffeinated in Montrose to make both of these stores a huge success. They were both absolutely packed. Congratulations to Starbucks. I attended along with my colleagues the Hayasa Center of California. They did a celebration for the independence of Armenia. It was a cultural event. They had brought over some very famous performers from Armenia, and congratulations to them for doing that. I also attended the Location Managers Guild of America's bi-annual meeting, which was held at the Glendale Hilton. This is where all the location managers, who are the people in Hollywood who pick the locations where television and movie are going to be shot, they had their meeting here in Glendale, and I was able to present to them about opportunities for filming and using Glendale as a location, including our own police building, which is now basically a large movie set. And it was really productive because a lot of them didn't realize that Glendale is kind of open for business, for film production. I guess about 10 years ago, we were considered to be one of the most unfriendly places to shoot, and now we've really changed that. Our own city clerk, Arti Kardashian, and his, sorry, I'm, yeah, you've been gone so long, we've just forgotten all about you. So Arti's office is really instrumental in doing film permitting, and he's been really making it a lot easier for shooting to happen here in Glendale. And the word's getting out, and it was great to be able to present to them and give them those opportunities, and I have to tell you, I've gotten about five emails from them, from different location managers since then, asking about different locations and asking if we could help them with giving them photographs of Glendale and, you know, just kind of hooking them up and giving them more information, and it's a great source of revenue for our city, so hopefully that will continue. And, oh, last but not least, the Armenian Council here on Central Avenue in their beautiful, newly renovated building had a very large celebration for the 21st anniversary of the Republic of Armenia, which I think all of us went to, and it was a great event, and I think probably half of Glendale was there from what I saw. It was hugely attended, so congratulations to them for pulling that event off. I don't know if I left anything out. I hope not.
Not much left. However, I would like to express my sincere thanks and appreciation to Congressman Adam Schiff, who just two days ago came out strongly against the 710 Tunnel. And just today, we learned officially that State Senator Carol Liu has come out officially against the 710 Tunnel. She joins Anthony Portantino, our State Assemblyman for our neighboring district, as well as the city councils of Glendale, South Pass, La Cuenyada Flint Ridge, the Crescenta Valley Town Council, I believe, is now firmly against it, as well as the city of Los Angeles. All these individuals and entities are against the tunnel. There will be a forum at South Pasadena High School tomorrow at 7:00. It's on Fremont Avenue in South Pasadena. And on Thursday morning, immediately preceding the MTA Board meeting, there will be a press conference held with the mayors of the four cities, along with the representatives, Congressman Schiff, our mayor, Frank Quintero will be present, I will be kicking it off, to express the firm opposition that this region has to spending billions and billions of dollars on a tunnel that is doomed to failure before it even is dug. So thank you to those elected officials higher up who have expressed their disdain for such a proposal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have lots to report and talk about. The consulate, the Armenian consulate did a wonderful job of putting together the celebration as well as the Hayasa Center. And the Sealy Building opening was fantastic. I mean, it's literally an anchor for that part of Glendale, and it's also the entrance to the city of Glendale, so now there's just a beautiful mixed use and readaptive use to that older building. They've done a wonderful job. Now, I'm going to move to talk about an event that's coming up this Saturday, September 29th, which is Unity Fest. I believe there's a graphic that can be shown. It starts at 2, it's from 2:00 to 7:00. It's on Brand Boulevard between California and Wilson. There's free admission and, of course, free parking at the Orange Street Garage. Lots of children activities from Aqua Ball to the city's park and play, different children's crafts. Then in terms of entertainment, we have everything you could possibly want. Korean dancing, martial arts demonstrations, the Hoover High Jazz Band, the DB Dance Center, which is kind of jazz hip-hop ballet, classic rock, Middle Eastern dance, a traditional lion dance from a Kung Fu, the Shaolin Kung Fu Association, a ballet for Clorico, Mexico, and then a rock and roll band. There'll be some food trucks. In addition to the local restaurants, you'll also be able to get something perhaps a little bit different than what we have on Brand. And there's lots of sponsors, I'm going to read them quickly. In other words, the city of Glendale doesn't pay for this, instead, the sponsors are providing the money. America's United Bank, which is a local bank here in Glendale, Allied Lending Group, CV Weekly, the Glendale Latino Association, Glendale Memorial Hospital, Glendale News Press, Glendale Water and Power, the Federal Credit Union here in the city of Glendale, and Super King Market. So let's have everyone show up for Unity Fest Saturday between 2:00 and 7:00 on Brand Boulevard. Next is some sort of a tradition that we haven't done for a long time, but I remember participating years ago, and I'm glad it's back. I don't know if the new city manager is the one that's put this together or not, but Glendale Dodger Night. It's going to be fun. Friday, September 28th at 7:00, and it'll be sort of, you know, the game's kind of held in our honor, although a former manager, Tommy Lasorda, it's also his birthday, so there should be lots of people in the stands. And you can buy your discounted tickets in person, online, and it's going to be a lot of fun. Most of the people from Glendale will be kind of sitting together, and the proceeds from all of the ticket sales are going to benefit Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. So they're working on this to get some money for our parks and open space. And then finally, I am very honored, very happy to have in our presence tonight a Glendalian, a local boy, even a local yokel, I guess you could say, who rose from just being a notable Glendale resident to someone who has, who is currently showing at the movie theater at the Americana, the Glendale at the Pacific Theaters, a motion picture, and it is about Glendale. It was produced here in Glendale, and let me just read some of the things that were written about it off of the Internet. He basically has gone from the Glendale Unified School Auditorium to the big screen with openings across the country. The name of the film is Uncle Raphael, and it was created and brought to life right here in Glendale, California by our very own playwright, producer, and actor, Bahik Piramazi. During this extraordinary journey, Bahik and Uncle Raphael garnered the attention of Hollywood director Mark Fusco, screenwriter Scott Yegaman, and producer Michael Garrity, and they made Glendale their homes for the four weeks that it took to shoot most of Uncle Raphael. So it was shot within the Glendale borders, there's plenty of beautiful shots of Glendale, and we're just very pleased to have him here, to have this celebrity in our midst. And so I've written a commendation, and it reads as follows. Presented to Bahik Piramazi, actor, producer, and co-writer, congratulations on your extraordinary journey. I highly commend you and your filmmaking team for bringing my Uncle Raphael to fruition. Your commitment is an inspiration to our community. I wish you great success in your future endeavors. I'm Frank Quintero, Mayor, and please come to the podium. Also with him is one of our commission members, Romella Marcari.
Thank you so much.
Wow.
It was working. You don't need to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, stand here. Well, truly, I'm honored. Mayor Quintero, members of City Council, thank you so much. When I started this character, the first stage play in Armenia when I did was in middle school, Roosevelt Middle School, and I did, sold out one week after another. A friend of mine told me, why don't you move out and get a bigger auditorium? I said, time will tell. And now, after four years, Uncle Raphael from the auditorium will see as a motion picture across the country in 14 different cities, which the highest, how would we say it, Hollywood people?
We came in fourth out of all the big movies.
The box office.
The box office.
The all-important box office.
Because of this theater, because seriously, Mark Fusco is the director of the movie, that's why I asked him to be here. Go ahead.
No, we came in fourth. We're very proud to have stood toe-to-toe with the big boys, and on a per-screen average, because of the auditoriums like the Americana, we were able to...
Great. Thank you so much. I will keep making movies. It was a great news. You had a meeting with the Hollywood location managers, because it's a great city. I think we need to let Hollywood people get to our town and show all the locations we have. That's what we did, you know, with our budget, of course, but they have bigger budget, and let's bring them to Glendale. Thank you so much.
Very good. So, Pacific.
If I may, Bahic, congratulations. It's a long ways from immigrants.
Oh, yes.
I know you've been working on a number of films and pieces, and it's good to see you succeeding in this manner. And from what I understand, the movie is very interesting and very comedic, very funny.
Family comedy, PG-13, yes.
Family comedy, so I want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And wish you much, much, many successes in the future.
Thank you so much. Greatly appreciated.
Pacific Theater, that's the place to be.
Whenever you have time, I can send people to bring you to the theater and watch the movie. And the rest of the people here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have one more. I have, I'd like to have the chief come up, and I know there's other people in the audience to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council and city staff. I'm Harold Scoggins, the fire chief. Tonight, I'm here with Zavin Kazazi, a member of Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club. And we're here tonight to talk about the Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon that's coming up on October 10th. That luncheon is sponsored by the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club. I think many of you know, last year at the event, we actually witnessed a miracle happen when our firefighters really went to work and did an outstanding thing in the, pretty much in the middle of the luncheon. It was pretty incredible, and this is why we praise and we honor our firefighters once a year for all the good work that they do. There have been many significant events throughout the course of the year, starting off on New Year's Eve with all the fires that we had then, from brush fires to traffic accidents to the tanker fires on the freeways, that our firefighters have just been performing just outstanding. And once again, we were awarded this year, as we were 20 years ago, this past August, a reclassification of our Class 1 status as a fire department by the insurance service offices. And what that does is it confirms that we really do a good job here in the Glendale Fire Department. And when you think about that, there's only 10 fire departments in the state of California out of almost 1,000 fire departments that are actually a Class 1 fire department. And there's between 50 and 60 across the entire United States. So it's almost a celebration for us this year at the awards luncheon. We're going to be praising some of our firefighters, Fire Captain Jeff Ragusa, Fire Engineer Trevor Welch, and firefighter Chris Mays. They're going to be our honorees this year. And Zavin Kazazi, and he's going to talk to you a little bit more about the event and give you more details.
Thank you, Chief. Well, as the chief mentioned, I'm Zavin Kazazi with the Glendale Sunrise Rotary, and it is a great privilege for us to be honoring the Glendale Fire Department and the awardees. One of the things is that during this time, we take an opportunity for the Glendale Sunrise Rotary to honor an individual who has done outstanding work in the community. And one of the requirements is that they cannot be a Rotarian. And it has to be somebody who is not a Rotarian. So this year, we are delighted that we're going to be honoring past Mayor Sheldon Baker and as our honorary. And so we're very pleased that he accepted to be there and to be honored. I also understand, if my information is correct, all of you are going to be there, so we're looking forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much for making time to be there. And this is an incredible event. It's a great fire department that we are so honored to have it in the City of Glendale. And it is also, it's such a privilege for us to be honoring the men and women and the volunteers during this ceremony. Please come and join us. We look forward to seeing everybody. By the way, one thing that I do want to mention is the fact that as we honor these, there's a, it's $65, which is in today's economy, I know it's tough, but at the same time, one of the things is that after we pay the bills, all the rest of the money, the Glendale Fire Department doesn't keep it, Glendale Rotary Club does not keep it, what we do is give it out in scholarships for fire cadets. And all the money is given out to fire cadets as scholarships. So, please be there, public, please join us, we look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you very much.
The date and location, one more time?
One more time. Wednesday, October 10th, at the Glendale Hilton at 11:30. Look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, I don't think, are there any other staff comments?
No, sir.
See none? All right, next, please.
Next is consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Menucha.
I'd like to pull B, D, and H.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was the first one?
B as in boy.
Thank you.
D as in David, and H.
All right. Motion from Mr. Weaver in a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menucha.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Would you read 5B?
5B is Chief of Police regarding Wellness Consultant for the Police Department. B1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of an agreement with W Solution Inc., DBA Wellness Solutions.
Well, I don't need a briefing on this, but I do want to ask the question of what is a wellness consultant, and why do we need it? As I was reading the report, it says the cornerstone of this fitness program is a complete fitness evaluation that includes a full blood panel and stress EKG. The goals are to reduce risk of cardiovascular disease, encourage employees to improve their physical fitness levels, reduce injuries, and then reduce the risk of cardiovascular disease. Don't we provide insurance, and shouldn't they be doing this anyways through the health insurance that we provide, the EKGs?
We do.
Smoking cessation?
The function of the wellness coordinator really is a reflection of the presumptive nature that law enforcement carries with it, with respect specifically to heart conditions, to joints, and also to hypertension. Those three areas in particular are areas of disability that, again, are presumptive to the law enforcement, meaning that if an officer is diagnosed with them, they automatically, under the laws of the state of California, are determined that it was caused by the job. So to the extent that employees are officers and sergeants and lieutenants, et cetera, they have insurance, they do take care of themselves, we do promote wellness, we do want to make sure that they live healthy lifestyles, the idea behind the wellness consultant is that it helps the city essentially ensure its investment in these particular individuals to make sure...
$105,000?
Say again.
It's $105,000. I know the money's coming from asset forfeitures, but we can use any funds we can get in a number of places. And just considering that, how much we spend on health insurance, I don't think it's necessary at this time to have a wellness consultant, in my opinion.
May I ask you a question? Have we done the analysis as to whether this money comes back to us in terms of reduction in workers' comp claims? Have we looked sort of at cities that have the wellness consultant, cities that don't, or times when we've had it and times we haven't?
That I don't know, ma'am. I do know that the way that we have set up this year's budget is to take a look at those types of indicators, to see pre and post, what are the usage rates for workers' comp?
Because to me, this expenditure makes sense if it does reduce our workers' compensation claims. And I think that, from my understanding, that is the goal. So do we have any sort of analysis as to whether that's actually working?
Mayor...
Lieutenant, give us your name for the record also.
Yes, Mayor, Council Lieutenant Brian Cohen. To answer your question, we do have three graphs that we, that do address the participants and non-participants within our department, showing that a significantly reduced workers' comp claims for people that are participants in the program itself.
Can we, can it be mandatory that they participate? Why do we make it optional?
In, I'm sorry, July 7th, I believe, July of 2007, all new police officers are mandatory participants. So as the years go on and through attrition, soon, everybody will be a participant in the program.
Isn't it required in the MOUs?
It is now.
And why is it coming to the council with this requirement?
It's still an appropriation of the department.
Do you have this included in the MOU?
Yes.
The participation as outlined by Lieutenant Cohen.
Participation, not necessarily the program? The program as well? Were required by the MOU to have this program?
It's mandatory participation.
Mandatory participation is a different thing. And my question is, are we required to have this program by the MOU?
Yes.
We're requiring folks to participate in the program, then by definition, we need to have a program. And on staff, we don't have that expertise, so we do consult or contract that out.
You have an excellent health insurance program. I don't understand why we need a...
Understanding that the health insurance program that we have is distinct from the specific skill set of this consultant. You have insurance, you use that insurance as you see fit, when you feel an ache, when you feel a pain. Again, looking at what the different stressors are within this particular line of work, separate and distinct from every one of our other departments, you have somebody that is trained specifically to look out for our score and safety personnel for those types of symptoms in those specific areas. If you leave it to the individual, they may or may not look to utilize their insurance. They often say, stress and tension are the silent killers with this, and so you wouldn't know that you have necessarily that issue. But this particular program, again, we're looking to ensure that investment in those officers.
Don't we have an annual reimbursement for checkup or EKG or...
Only for management personnel?
But my question is, if you've seen a significant difference between those who participate and those who don't, can you extrapolate that into what kind of savings we would have on a per-year basis in sick time, workers' comp claims, all of those things that a less healthy workforce would lead to?
But there are a number of variables. I mean, that's what we would say, is that people that participate in the program, their claims are much less. And if you look at those graphs there, you can see some just huge differences. You know, in 2006, 2007, cost per claim, we're looking at $3,100 for a participant and $17,000 for a non-participant. And that's been pretty, it's been a pretty steady trend through the life of the program.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that, from what I've seen in the staff report, that this program actually does pay that money back and then some.
That's what we believe. That's what we believe. I also have the vice president of wellness here and also our fitness coordinator, if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant. I have one speaker, Herbert Milano.
Mr. Milano, you have two minutes.
Eric Quintero, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I've, it was, I think, a few years ago, if I recall correctly, when there was a lot of resistance from the Glendale Police Officers Association, when there was going to be a similar type of requirement on the MOU, that police officers meet a certain level of fitness. Now, as you were moving along this line of measuring and making an investment in good health, I think it's a fantastic idea, so long as we're able to actually look at the numbers and figure out to what extent workers' compensation insurance has increased in the last few years. I come before you several times, presenting to you the fact that workers' compensation as a whole for the City of Glendale employees has increased over 300% in the last 10 years. And the last time I checked, I think it was around $16 million a year for this. So I would like to suggest that the city council require that the staff come to you next year if you decide to approve this. First of all, with a trend line of all of the costs with regard to workers' compensation for the police department, perhaps with some additional information with regard to what type of claims have been presented, and what type of injuries the police are experiencing. And also to see if there's, perhaps within this purview, to find out why it is that so many, 50% of police and fire retire on a disability. I believe that those numbers are open to a question and evaluation. I submitted a California Public Records Act on it. I was denied the information, claiming that it was private. I didn't ask for any names, I was just simply asking for the statistics of the type of problems found that make these officers, when they're about to retire, less than the last year or two, file a disability claim. I applaud you for moving on this, but I really suggest that the city council demand an accountability a year from now. Thank you much.
Okay, do I have a motion?
5B1.
Second.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
How many employees are participating in this program at this point? How many police officers?
Defer to Lieutenant Cohen.
I have some numbers here, but I just want to clarify.
Councilman, let me look up here, I believe we had 190, 191 participated in the full program last year.
Out of, out of how many?
It was two, I think it was 212. But we have, you know, that is with the full wellness program itself, doing all the fitness testing. There's a number of programs that go on where they're doing, teaching different programs that go, and they offer that up to outside for the rest of the city as well. So I can go in and pull you the annual report and submit that to you, which would break every single number down for every event and every contact our wellness coordinator has.
Okay, I'd like that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
And? No. Jarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Eric Quintero.
Yes. Next.
5D is Chief of Police and Fire Chief regarding procurement of law enforcement, fire emergency, medical, and all hazards response logistics. D1 is a motion authorizing execution of an agreement with the City of Los Angeles for award of the 2011 United States Department of Homeland Security, Los Angeles Long Beach Urban Area Security Initiative, UASI, grant in an amount of $1,103,784. D2 is a resolution appropriating the grant funds of $1,103,784 for the procurement.
Okay, this is, again, over a million dollars of expenditures. Again, it's a grant funding program. However, as I was going through the fiscal impacts of this issue, it says, equipment procured with these grant funds is not depreciated and not projected to be replaced with general fund expenditures. As the equipment that I see there, there's a number of them, how are we planning on replacing this equipment or repairing or the maintenance cost of this equipment, like the automated license plate regional project, video downlink equipment, optical night vision, regional aircraft GPS system, all these equipment, how will they be maintained and how will it be paid for, the maintenance of these equipment? And if we do need to replace them, what happens then? Just it's not being depreciated.
That's Mr. Captain Eady to give you a detailed response, the idea being that the grants that are provided by the feds and by the state, and the SHICAP and the Wasi that you see scattered throughout the consent agenda, continue to provide a source of funding for those, I'll call them ancillary types of equipment, that aren't part of the base function of the department. But I would defer to Mr. Eady.
Mr. Honorable Mayor, members of council and staff, Captain Ray Eady from your police department. Councilmember Menucha, the reason why we don't depreciate the items that are bought with the grant funds is because those are additional to our baseline equipment and needs that the department maintains. The homeland security funds, the purpose behind those is to increase capacity, capabilities, and establish competencies you don't already have. And the reason we don't depreciate is because these are programmatic participations that we have here. So any equipment that we're receiving, we're doing it on a regional basis, everything is regional. Other cities are also enjoined in these particular programs. And the thought is, you use it until the wheels are falling off of it, and hopefully there's another grant behind it. But these are not things that we rely on for day-to-day operations, so once they do expire, once they become obsolete, we don't have a necessity to use local funds to replace them. We simply don't have it. And the chances are, by the time much of this equipment reaches that point, it's going to be obsolete anyway, there's going to be something bigger and better out there that we'll seek other funding for.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I will move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menucha.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
5H is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding status of activities to meet the GWP Renewables...
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes.
Next.
5H is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding status of activities to meet the GWP renewable portfolio standards. H1 is motion to note and file a report.
Couple of questions. Usually when we have note and file reports, it's under action items, so that we present the item to the community in terms of the renewable energy that we're using. And the second is, on page four of the report, we have a number of items that are listed that specify where we are receiving the energy from and what type of energy they are, the name and the resource. The last item, it says miscellaneous power purchases. It says under resources, it says not specified. And below it, it says unspecified, 14.2% of the power is not specified. I was wondering, what does that mean? Where are we getting the power that is not specified in the report?
Mr. Lindz is happy to answer that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Lindz, chief assistant general manager for Glendale Water and Power. Unspecified is just a market purchase, so it's not linked to a specific resource. It's not specifically renewable or coal or anything. It's a market purchase. That's why it's unspecified.
Purchasing power on a market?
Yes.
Okay, I was also going to pull this item because just so the public would have a feel for what we're doing. We have a good percentage of wind that we've purchased throughout the years. Then we have the bio grass, biogas that we get from the landfill. The landfill is helping to light our homes. Of course, we have Hoover. We've got solar at the Glendale College and other locations. And then natural gas, Grayson Natural Gas, a part of the Magnolia Plant in Burbank that we purchased years ago. And even 7% of a nuclear plant in Palo Verde. I think it's a well-diversified portfolio that I hope will grow in renewable energies and natural gas, which is all-American.
And we have 14%, approximately renewable.
That was end of year last year.
There's a limit that we have to reach by 20?
20, 33%.
33%?
Correct.
But we have other benchmarks that we have to meet before we get there.
We have a compliance statement, 2016, 25%.
Okay.
At the end of...
Are we doing it?
Next year, we have to average 20%. We're well on our way to our first compliance component. And I think, Mr. Mayor, I was asking Steve, we have a pie chart that was going over what you were just saying. I was going to see if we could put that up so the audience could see it. This is really kind of a basic end-of-year report, but this is an extremely important issue to me, and I know it is to you as well. And we're reaching some critical junctures here where we need to make some decisions on where we're going in the future if we're going to meet these deadlines. We've got options on wind projects. We've got the market changes with, for instance, solar has come down. Solar is more equitable than it was. We've got our own biogas, you know, mine, if you will, at Shoal Canyon, and we have the ability to better cultivate that and use that. There's geothermal projects that are going up. SCAP, which is the organization where we partner with on a lot of these, has a lot of irons in the fire with regards to renewables. But we need to make some key decisions, because these are long-term decisions that could be very costly for us. If we lock ourselves into 20- or 25-year contracts, we want to make sure that we're doing it with our eyes wide open and all the data that we need. So with all of that said, in about a month, I'll be coming back to you, and Mr. Lindz will be presenting a much more in-depth report on our renewables. We'll have, there's a couple of things that I think would benefit us if we had those with our staff to model and monitor some of these things, and we'll be a little bit more precise in some of the details of these deadlines and what we're looking at. So I didn't want to give short shift to this particular item, but we have a much more robust presentation for you in about a month.
This report is basically an administrative item that we needed for regulatory purposes to present, but we will be coming back with that detailed report.
Okay, I'll move to note and file the item at 5H. Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes.
What's next?
Next is oral communications. This is a portion reserved for three-minute, community-wide announcements. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
All right, I'll start with Paula Devine, followed by Steve Traxel. Steve Traxel. Start with Paula Devine.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, city council and staff. I'm Paula Devine, and Kathy LeFkowitz and I are here to let the women in Glendale know that this is last call for the Women Achievers Business Life Luncheon and Workshops, which will be held on Thursday at the Glendale Hilton, and we're going to be starting at 8:15 for registration. The workshops are all about leadership training and healthcare and business life, and one of the questions that we're going to try to answer is, can we do it all? And so the tickets for the luncheon and the workshop, $65. You can register for the workshops online at businesslife.com, and hope to see everybody there. At the luncheon, we are going to be honoring the 2012 Women Achievers, and I think some of the names are familiar to all of you. Zazet Mullins is one, Lieutenant Lola Avrahamian from our Glendale Police Department, Laura Patrick from our Parks Commission, Lena Bezoyan, former commissioner on the Status of Women, Melina Sardar from Art Family Center, Edna Korinsky from the Verdugo Community, what is it, Foundation, and Gail Craig, President of Seroptimus. So, and plus a lot of other wonderful women from Burbank and Pasadena. So that's Thursday morning, 8:30 for registration. The workshops start at 9:00 AM, lunches at 12:00. That's one major event. The second major event I want to talk about is Sunday, and it is the kickoff for the Army of Pink. It's Glendale Adventist Medical Center Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign, and we're very honored to have the mayor as one of our candidates for the coolest and busiest guy in pink this year. The fun thing about Sunday is the fact that it's going, the kickoff is going to be held at the Rose Bowl Pavilion, and you're going to get a peek at the Rose float for this coming year. So it's $25 a ticket. It starts at 4 o'clock, and everyone is welcome to come. And you can go to glendaleadventist.com-armyofpink tomorrow, September 26th. The videos will air for all of the candidates, and you'll want to see the mayor's for sure, so that you can vote for him as your favorite candidate in pink. Thank you very much.
I definitely win the coolest award.
The coolest.
I don't know if I'm going to win the election or not, but...
Oh, Kathy wanted me to remind you that as far as the luncheon, the Business Life Conference, the workshops are free, the luncheon is $65, but it all can come as a complete package for 65. Thank you.
Steve Traxel, followed by Leon Mayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Steve Traxel. I am the campaign director for 40 Days for Life, and I want to make you aware of a couple of events. 40 Days for Life is a community-based campaign that draws attention to the evils of abortion through a three-point program. We conduct a 40 consecutive-day prayer vigil that begins tomorrow, and we do this also prayer and fasting and community outreach. We begin tomorrow at 7:00 AM and run through 7:00 PM daily through November 4th, 2012, and this will be a peaceful and prayerful vigil. All of our participants are required to sign a statement of peace. We are also having a kickoff rally tomorrow evening at Shaky's Pizza at 1133 South Glendale Avenue at 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And this is also a fundraiser where Shaky's is donating 25% of all food purchases, drinks not included, to 40 Days for Life. Glendale is one of 316 cities worldwide that is participating in this vigil simultaneously, and we are, this will be the third vigil that is conducted in the city of Glendale. The vigil location is at, in front of 372 West Arden Avenue in Glendale, and that is between Central and Pacific. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library, the friends of the Glendale Library, and tonight for a specific announcement, the Center for Armenian Remembrance. I'm giving you a heads up about a terrific program we're going to have Thursday night at 7:00. The name of the speaker is Antonio Arslan. Antonio Arslan is world famous, at least Western Europe and the United States and Canada and Mexico. She's world famous as a writer and a lecturer, and she's written a book called The Road to Smyrna. Now, The Road to Smyrna starts in Aleppo in Syria, 1916. A mother Arslanian has her four children in the attic, I mean, in the cellar of a friendly home in Aleppo where they had apparently survived by a dramatic escape, the march to the desert, or tour. And it's funny, the diary of Anne Frank, they were in the attic, and The Road to Smyrna, they were in the cellar, and they survived and ended up in Smyrna, and it's a great story. It's a great story. And this lady, Antonio Arslan, is from Italy, although she's of Armenian descent, and she's lectured all over the country. She's won awards, and it's a thrill to be able to have somebody of her stature come to Glendale from Italy to talk about her book, The Road to Smyrna. Now, I have another couple of short announcements. That's 7:00 Thursday. Come early. We expect a good crowd. We have at the library a book sale, great books donated by members of the community, and they'll go for bargain prices, 25 cents, 50 cents, a dollar, but great books, and they'll be at the dock area Friday and Saturday. And finally, I told you about, three, four weeks ago, that in conjunction with the Occidental College 125th anniversary, we were going to attempt to and get a professor from Occidental to come to the library, and we do have such a person. I'm not going to talk about the details tonight, but we do have Professor Peter Dreyer from Occidental College, who's written a book called 100 Greatest Americans of the 20th Century, and he'll be at the library November 7th. That's right after the election. There's going to be a lot of fireworks, I'm sure.
All right, thank you very much.
And we'll talk about that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I have flyers for anybody's interest in The Road to Smyrna.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, before we move on to adoption of ordinances, I want to recognize someone in the audience, Private First Class Nicholas Lansafame, if Channel 6 can get down, stand up, private. And he is fresh out of the Marine Corps Recruit Depot in San Diego, California, freshly minted and perfect shape, and he chose not to go in the air wing or not to go in supply. He's going to go with the Fleet Marine Forces. He's going to go with the infantry. So I'm very happy to have him here tonight. He's a local boy, born and raised, and hopefully he'll be serving his country and coming back fairly soon, but he's off to the adventure of his life, that's for sure.
And he's the son... And he's, of course, the son of our own Phil Lansafame.
That's right.
Is within our family.
Thank you very much. All right, next, please.
Next, under adoption of ordinances, 7A is ordinance authorizing execution of a development agreement in connection with the Glendale Triangle Project to be located at 3900 San Fernando Road. This was introduced by council member Weaver on September 18th, 2012.
Move 7A.
Second.
Okay, I have one speaker, Margaret Hammond.
My name is Margaret Hammond, and I've been a resident of Adams Hill for 54 years. Things have gotten better and they've gotten worse in the area, considering that we keep having housing apartments, projects, whatever you want to call them, dumped down in our area continually. We are now looking at one that I'm told is a private development, being in the triangle at the corner of San Fernando, Las Feliz, and Central. The traffic jams in that area are already stupendous, and to add more people to that mix is absolutely idiotic. That's all there is to it. And the fact that we don't seem to ever get a relief from this type of thing. How many more of these large units? I mean, he's going to be allowed to add 225 units because he's giving 21 low-income housing or apartments. Now, and add a whole floor. I just read that in the paper, and I went like, what? Is, what is going on? Why is it always down by us? Why can't it be in the north end? Why can't it be up in north central, up on mountain, up in those areas? Why does it always have to be down in our area where we get all these additional people and additional traffic and problems dumped on us? We're the densest area in all of Glendale, in all of the state. Percentage-wise, I think we're the densest area. At one time, I understood somebody said, we're in America, considering the amount of space and the number of people that are packed into there. We're like rats in a trap down there, and you keep adding and adding all these extra housing units. We really don't need them down there. We have enough, and it's time that was stopped. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manukian?
Yes, I will be voting against this ordinance. As I mentioned last week, as we were discussing this issue, that the use intensifies the use with additional 60 units. And the reason why the developer gave us for the additional floor was because construction costs went up. That is no excuse. They should have done their homework before. When they came in and they got the initial authorization to build whatever they were going to build, they should have stuck to it and not intensified the use with additional 60 units. So I'll be using, so I will be voting against it.
Mr. City Attorney? Can we turn this project down based on its density? Can you explain the law to me?
Members of council, council member Friedman, keep in mind that this particular approval is for the development agreement. So the development agreement would provide certain vesting rights for the project, as well as it allows the developer to take a credit for the development fee. The project itself, in terms of the design review approvals, were actually approved last week by the council. So even if this development agreement is not approved, the applicant still has the right to build that project that received approval last week. This only deals with the particular, the development impact fee and the credit that's being provided under the development impact fee for the fee that was already paid for by the developer last year.
So let's go back to last week. We have a project that's within its rights in terms of the density. It's building within the codes. It's not asking for any variance in terms of density. It's taking advantage of a state law that we cannot trump, that we are not allowed to say we won't follow, a state law. So can we then say, even though the zoning code says you can build this number of units and state law says you can add this many units, we don't like the density, so we're not going to vote for it? Tell me what the law says about that and what recourse that developer would have if we had made that decision.
Councilmember Friedman, with respect to the density in terms of the number of units, I do believe both with the zoning code and the state density bonus law do allow that number of units. There was discretion with the council with respect to the design.
Right, with respect to the design. So we could have said, go and make the windows different, make the doors different.
And certain design elements, as it affected the bulk and the mass, but I don't think the design approval could be used as a hook to limit the amount of units that were allowed under the zoning code. That's correct.
Exactly. That project could not be rejected based on density legally. If somebody buys a piece of property and the zoning code says they can have a certain number of units, and state law says they can add another certain number of units under state law, we have absolutely no right to tell them that they can't do that. In fact, if we did that and they were to sue us, they would win, and they'd probably get damages as well. And the design review part, you could play that game only so long before you eventually have to approve a design. Maybe they make their unit smaller, maybe they take that story down, but I don't think anybody here didn't like the design. I don't think anybody here thought the building was too big, considering it's across from a larger building. So if we're interested in reducing density, we could downzone that entire... So if we're interested in reducing density, we could downzone that entire area, although I think anyone who's bought property based on the number of units they're allowed and paid a certain premium for that would probably also have some sort of a lawsuit or something to say about us downzoning them. But to point to one project and say that we should not approve it because of the density, as far as I'm hearing, would not be proper, was not in front of us for density, it was in front of us only for the design and for the credit of the fees they had already paid. So I just want the community to understand that. Now, in terms of whether that neighborhood's too dense, I think that's a different discussion for a different day. That discussion, that downtown plan and that area's density was done many years ago. There are other areas of the city. I think that the central west part of Glendale, near Glendale High, is actually, I think that's actually the densest part of Glendale, not the far south part, from what I've seen in terms of density maps. And also in northwest by Sonora and Glen Oaks is also a very dense part of Glendale. So, you know, it is spread out to some extent, but it's true, yeah, the single-family neighborhoods where Ms. Hammond lives are less dense than in our downtown core on-brand on Central. So I just want to make it clear about what we're here to approve tonight and what we were able to approve last week. Do you have a second for your motion?
Well, Mr. Weaver introduced the.
Yeah, he made the motion. There was a motion and a second, yes.
But, Mr. Najarian, did you want to?
So this was a very interesting discussion we had last week, and let me, without getting into all my issues, just highlight a few. First of all, this developer from Texas feels that Glendale is his target at this point. True, maybe we couldn't have dealt with the density per se and denied him his rights under SB 1818, but clearly what we're doing is conferring on him a benefit of approximately 30% additional units in his project, and at the same time, giving him a credit for all the fees that he had paid, which had otherwise expired. What was incumbent upon this council to do was to put up a little bit of a fight and to ask him to contribute additional funds or waive those funds that he had already paid, which go to our parks and which go to our libraries. And that's where I think we should have gone. We're giving him a benefit that he doesn't deserve at this point, under the guise of a miscalculated construction costs, which, previous, immediately post-meeting, our Director of Public Works, who knows a little bit about construction, said that the bids for all his construction projects were still coming in quite favorably. This is not something I can support, and I think it's time we, as a Glendale council, take our foot off the gas pedal of accelerating construction projects, creating more density in the downtown area. It was great, and look where we've got. We've got, how much, 1,000 units or more coming in? It's time we let our foot off the gas pedal. I'm not saying slam on the brakes, but let's just ease up, because I think that we're going to have a lot of units online that are going to create a lot of impacts that we may be miscalculated and underestimated.
I have a question. What are the total fees that this project is going to pay?
I think they're upwards of over $4 million.
$4 million, so the city of Glendale is going to get $4 million in revenue that we haven't had. This project is going to be across the street from Glendale Memorial. I'm sure that the nurses and doctors and interns and everyone else that work there are probably going to fill one quarter to maybe one-half of these units. It's next to the Transit Center with Amtrak, MTA, et cetera. It's near all of the bus lines. It's literally the corner. By the way, it's going to be housing, and then at the bottom will be cafes, restaurants, commercial work. It's on the corner where all of the bus lines pretty much coincide. If you're going down Los Feliz, or north, or south, central, et cetera. It's currently occupied by a Burger King and a car wash. You can imagine how much traffic you get from those two enterprises. And then finally, it is the anchor into Glendale, just like that Sealy's Building is one of the avenues into the city. This is another avenue. It's a beautifully designed building. I think it's going to look great on that corner. And, by the way, the city of Glendale is not giving this developer a dime. There's no giveaway, there's no anything. This is a private sector purchase of that property from two property owners, and I support this project all the way. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
No.
Najarian.
No.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next item at 8, under Action Items 8A is Director of Community Development regarding implementation of the Glendale Fresh Air Ordinance options for consideration to facilitate hookah use and options for addressing secondhand smoke exposure in multifamily dwellings. 8A1 is ordinance for introduction amending the GMC relating to smoking in outdoor dining areas. At 8A2 is a motion providing direction to staff on further changes.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. In 2008, the Glendale City Council took a landmark decision in putting in place the Fresh Air Ordinance. At this point, we are back in front of you with an update on its implementation and a discussion on several different policy choices that the council has with respect to that implementation, relating specifically to types of uses and additional restrictions that may be employed. With that, Mr. Agani, our CDD Director, and Mr. Foy will be giving you the actual staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Ochoa said, Tim Foy, our Deputy Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services, will be giving the presentation on the staff report in a minute. The staff report and the presentation have been divided into three pieces, because there are so many different topics that are jumbled together in our communications with the public and the communications that you receive from the public, we decided to divide them into three areas of outdoor smoking areas, the use of hookah or hookah lounge use as a separate discussion, and then smoking in multifamily units. This staff report has been prepared by many different staff members, starting with Mr. Engel, who retired recently, and the City Attorney's Office has contributed to this, and Mr. Foy has really put in the final efforts on it. He'll give the presentation. Mr. Mayor, we request that the questions and comments on the presentation be held until the end of the presentation, because we've tried to keep it short and simple, and at the end of the presentation, we'll be happy to answer any questions or respond to comments.
That's a good idea, Mr. Agani.
And in the vein of that, of the differentiation between these different policy areas, again, the idea is there's an issue of outdoor, smoking in outdoor patios of a certain size, hookah lounges, and multifamily housing restrictions. Those are the three areas that we're focused on.
Good evening. Glendale has had a Fresh Air Ordinance since 2008. It focuses on city property and public right-of-way and places of employment. Smoking is allowed in some places in multifamily housing developments, businesses, outdoor dining areas, hotels, shopping malls, and tobacco shops. As the city manager indicated, we will be focusing on a series of policy options for the city council. The first policy area, which we're calling Area A, deals with allowable smoking in outdoor dining areas. Area B will be hookah lounges as a separate land use, and C as a multifamily housing. The council may make some or no changes to the existing ordinance. Area A, outdoor dining, the current rules are that 25% of the tables in an outdoor dining area may be set aside for smoking of all manners. They may be 10 feet from non-smoking tables. They have to be 20 feet from windows and entrances. And when we say outdoor dining, it means not just restaurants, but also taverns and nightclubs can have a similar setup. For this option, we have included in a draft ordinance that the council may consider introducing, if you're interested in that. That draft ordinance would allow larger outdoor areas of at least 5,000 square feet to have 50% of the tables have permitted smoking instead of just 25%. You would still need to maintain a 10-foot separation from non-smoking areas of the outdoor dining, as well as 20 feet from windows and entrances. And additionally, that area would have to be building setback lines if any are applicable in that zone, even if it's not within a building. We're just mimicking the building setback line as additional protection.
Recognizing that 5,000 square feet is a rather large number, the size of a rather large single-family home, just by way of reference.
Huge, single-family.
Yes, so the pros and cons of this approach would be that it does allow flexibility for businesses and customers. There is the extra setback requirement that might protect especially areas that are near residential zones, and it really doesn't change the underlying policy much. It's a tweak to the existing ordinance without any great changes. The cons is that it would be restricted to large operators. There are not that many areas that have 5,000 square feet of outdoor dining. Moving on to Policy Area B, establishing hookah lounges as a separate land use. Currently, we treat smoking of hookah the same as we treat smoking of cigarettes or pipe tobacco. It's not permitted as a standalone use, and it's permitted only as part of an outdoor dining area. The options under this, of course, are to maintain the existing policy and make no changes. Other policy changes could include establishing hookah lounges either as a permitted indoor use or as an outdoor use. Both would involve an amendment to the zoning code, so it could not be introduced as an ordinance tonight. Pros and cons, of course, that we do, it does respond to certain business demands. There are, as you know, a handful of business operators who have their customers asking for just this. The cons is that the indoor use is probably not very practical in that it would violate the state labor code, and indoor and outdoor use may be seen as the city promoting smoking, especially of hookahs. Finally, in multifamily housing, currently, smoking is not allowed on balconies and patios, in common areas, or in parking areas. The policy options the council could direct staff to look into, other than the no-change option, would be to make all the units in Glendale smoke-free by a certain date. We put up five years from now, but that's, there's nothing magical about that figure. Secondly, the council could take, I guess, perhaps slightly more passive approach and make units smoke-free as they turn over, and make all new units smoke-free. Thirdly, there are some cities have toyed with co-locating smoking units within a building into a certain wing or a certain end of the building by a certain date. The advantages and disadvantages of these is that it obviously would help address the problem of unwanted secondhand smoke drifting into non-smoking units and bothering those residences. It wouldn't cause major enforcement difficulties for the city if we were to try to regulate smoking within a unit. We have enough difficulty meeting the demands for enforcement in outdoor areas. So as a recap, the Area A, Policy Area A focuses on outdoor smoking in larger patio spaces. Policy Area B is whether to allow hookah lounges as a permitted use, and C is whether we should further extend our regulations for multifamily properties. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Foy or Mr. Agani?
I have a question for Mr. Garcia. This is the right time. I think you know what I'm going to ask.
I do.
Looking into this, well, just to jump ahead before there's public comment, I'm very interested in the option for multifamily housing about requiring a grouping of non-smoking units. I don't know why it has to be by a certain date. I don't know why they couldn't just set those up now and create them through attrition, so you have your non-smoking sections, and as smokers move out, that unit becomes permanently non-smoking. But we had been talking, well, it was by a certain date, and I'm saying, I don't know why we have to, why they have to wait. They can just have their section set up now, but beyond that, the enforcement part was of concern, so I spoke to some people and found out that the other cities have tried, have added a civil remedy to their codes, which I had asked the city attorney to explore, both for any new ordinance, if there's a change, but also for our existing ordinance, which right now, we have to enforce it. It's very difficult, because if someone's complaining that someone in their building's always smoking in the common area, unless we catch them in the act, we can't do anything about it. But what the civil, what is it called?
Private right of enforcement.
Private right of enforcement means is that you have a lower burden to prove if you were to civilly take that offending person to court, and it goes into the code, and it means that if you have photos and you have evidence, that you have a burden, which rather than having to prove they're a nuisance, all you have to prove is that they're breaking the ordinance. I hope I got that at least a little bit correct, but I'm asking if you could elaborate on what that means and how it works and how it would work with our code.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Friedman, in conjunction with this item, you did ask us to look at what some of the other cities have done with respect to the private right of enforcement, and it is essentially that it's giving individual third parties, not the city, to seek private enforcement of our ordinance, and it would allow individuals to seek either injunctive or declaratory relief that the ordinance has been violated, or injunctive relief, basically restraining order, if an individual can show that a neighbor or somebody that they've witnessed is violating our smoking ordinance, or in addition to seek damages, and that could be something that's set in the code by council, or it can be according to proof at trial. And what it does, it does, civilly, there is a lower burden of proof that anybody bringing a civil cause of action, it's preponderance of evidence versus when we are usually prosecuting code violations under our code. If we go the misdemeanor route or criminal route, it is the higher beyond a reasonable doubt standard. So those are the two issues that other cities have used to create that additional enforcement mechanism that at least provides an additional mechanism to address some of the practical issues that we as a city deal with, both in terms of staffing and the actual level of proof that's required to prosecute these particular violations.
I guess the big question then is, how is it working in the other cities? Because the big complaint that I've had about our smoking ordinance is from people who are in, let's say, usually it's an apartment building where there's somebody who's violating the ordinance, and we can't enforce, because we can't catch them in the act, because we don't have the manpower to put somebody there, you know, three hours a day or send someone by every day. So this is a way that other cities have tried to address that, to make it easier for those people to get relief, to get that person to be forced to stop that illegal activity. So how is it working in other cities?
I can't, at this moment, tell you how this private right of enforcement is working in this context of smoking, and that's something that the council gives us the direction that they want to include this as a future amendment. When we bring that back, we'll get that data. I can tell you, in other contexts of municipal code violations, where cities give individual citizens the private right of enforcement, it is effective in some circumstances, but we bring that information back to you if we get direction from the council on that.
The city council can pass an ordinance requiring all new construction to be smoke-free. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All of the downtown projects that we have coming in, including that project in front of Glendale Memorial, those could all be smoke-free from day one.
That's correct.
Even though they are in the process already, we would not apply retroactively?
Now, this wouldn't be a vested rights issue. This would be, we're basically putting the burden on people that live there, and because it's, we're applying it to new units, it's something that we can certainly do.
New units would be considered the ones that are not built yet?
Correct.
Not the ones that are, let's say...
Titleled. That's right.
All right, they have to be occupied. Okay, any other questions? I have approximately 16 cards, so I'm going to read the first name and then the second name. Please move to the front so we can get through your comments, and we'll do three minutes. You don't, you're not obligated to speak the whole three minutes, by the way, but if you want to, you certainly can.
We'll get the drift.
Phyllis Meisler, followed by Chantel Dean.
News press.
And we need your name for the record, so when you come to the podium.
Yes, of course. Phyllis Meisler. I'm here to speak against the ordinance change, and I guess for no change regarding multifamily dwellings. I sent you four emails supporting my statements. I sent you four emails supporting my statements. I want to draw the council's attention to the Glendale News Press cartoon of September 15. It depicts hookah smokers distressing the neighbors. At best, it is culturally insensitive; at worst, it is racist. In line with cultural insensitivity, know that tonight is the start of Yom Kippur, so there are other Jewish people who could not come tonight. It is disturbing as one proponent of this amendment represents a faith-based or institution, and the religion always has been known to be anti-smoking. I'm a mental health professional. I've been around these issues of social concerns for a long time. In 2002, it was drugs and alcohol. Today Disneyland is serving beer and wine, and we're looking at a massively failed war on drugs. Today, the issues are identified as obesity and tobacco, eating and smoking. The issues change, but the cause of their identification is the same: political manipulation and who has the money. What is fact-based or what the people want is seen as irrelevant by the powers that be. Just drag a $1,000 bill across the floor and see institutions jump. Often, issues regard the habits of minorities that conflict with the dominant culture. We always have to be aware of racism and civil rights are involved when identifying a problem. In 2008, the anti-smoking ordinance would have gone down in defeat by 72% if a referendum had been held. However, for its own reasons, the city council decided to pass it to ensure it went through. Today, the council is being pressured to impose no smoking within people's own four walls. Why threaten people's housing now? The CDC, Center for Disease Control, states LA County has the lowest smoking rate in the country, in the country, since 2005. Smoking has significantly decreased based on education alone, while obesity has gone on the rise. Yet the council is dealing with smoking inside the home. CDC discussed policies only about outside public areas around dining and not about inside the home, yet the council is poised to do the opposite.
Thank you, ma'am. Chantel Dean, followed by Harvey Pearson.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you so much. As an employee of Gaucho's Village and Hollywood Hookah Lounge, I come forward to City Council to address 8A.
Name for the record?
My name for record is Chantel Dean, definitely. Thank you. We at Hollywood Hookah Lounge already have enforced no cigarette smoking on the premises, and hookah only contains 0.5% tobacco. Hookah is a cultural celebration within Middle Eastern countries, and has been a way for those to express their cultural upbringings. For those of us employed by Hollywood Hookah, this is more than just supporting those who come together every weekend to celebrate their culture. This is a way for us to survive in a very expensive city. Moving all the way from Washington DC alone to Glendale, California, Gaucho's Village and Hollywood Hookah has been a way for me to make ends meet in a society and country where jobs are dwindling, and those who are currently employed still find it hard to make ends meet. I can't imagine what life would be like if a huge portion of my check would be missing, seeing as though it's already hard for those of us working day-to-day just to make ends meet. With the economy in the shape it is, it surely would not be easy to just find another job. Maybe we can put together time in helping the city of Glendale make new jobs, as well as help the homeless that sit on brand as many in the city step over them. I can't imagine what life would be like if I had to join the corners due to city council wanting to close down hookah lounges, which only carry 0.5% tobacco. If it makes city council any more comfortable, Hollywood Hookah is not located in the vicinity of any homes, condos or apartments, which means no one in the city would be affected by hookah smoke, considering the fact we are directly beside an alley and beside a business that closes every time our hours start. I see more harm in the street cleaning trucks that dispense a ridiculous amount of pollution at every turn than with hookah lounges that have become a cultural celebration, a source of income, and an investment for the owner who has supplied many of us with an extra way just to get by. I hope today we can put our focus on helping the homeless in Glendale, and maybe putting them on the agenda and not ignore this fact any longer. Thank you so much, City Council. Have a great day.
Thank you. Harvey Pearson, followed by Mona Montgomery.
Mayor, council members, I'm Harvey Pearson, and I, as you may recall, I live in Los Feliz, but I have a very significant other who lives in what Margaret Hammond, I believe it is, referred to as a rat hole in South Glendale, near the Triangle Development, and she lives over somebody who currently does not smoke, and I'd hate to see happen to her if he's, a new tenant moved in, started smoking. She's upstairs, secondhand smoke rises, to what happened to me for many years in Los Feliz, where the smoker would smoke all night, and it would rise right up, and it was like living in an ashtray. So now I have respiratory problems. That person has passed away. Fortunately, the current tenants don't smoke, and I believe the owner, he, he went to common areas banned and common areas, and then decided, I believe, that no smoking in units, people can smoke in a little backyard of this building, and that's where they have, like, barbecue, and then they can smoke cigarettes at the same time. But it would seem that if you have no smoking in units, that it helps, you don't get the same thing of people complaining about people are smoking when only common areas is banned, because they, people know, and tenants know when they come in, no smoking in units, no smoking in the common areas, they don't want to move into the building if they know that's going to be the way it is, and there's no confusion to, well, hey, I wasn't in the common area, I was in my own apartment door, and maybe I left the door open and somebody's complaining. They know they're not supposed to be smoking inside the unit either. So whatever you think is the, the best way to make it work, that's something that protects the non-smokers first and foremost, when they're in their own units, they shouldn't have to suffer somebody else's secondhand smoke, smoking in another unit. Thank you very much.
You, Mona Montgomery, followed by Kevin Akzaki.
Good, good evening. My name is Mona Montgomery, and I'm against the change, because I think it's a change for the worse and not for the better. The law makes it clear that we should not do this, whatever he was talking about, I didn't understand, but he said it does violate the state labor code, of course, because it introduces smoke, secondhand smoke into the labor force, which is unhealthy. My main concern, though, is the psychological association with hookahs to marijuana, and I want to remind you, you can tell that I'm from the 60s, and that I saw a generation, my whole generation, fall by the wayside because of this marijuana and everybody getting excited about drugs, not something you people concern yourself with, but something that I have seen, and I know very well that hookahs are associated with marijuana use. It may not say so in the law, but it's a fact, that anyone who's had anything to do with marijuana use knows. And I'm sure all of the young people in our society know that there is a strong usage association with hookah pipes, a fun way to do drugs and marijuana. And I want to point out, above all, that the human brain does not stop growing until the age of 26, at which time it has reached its full size. That's why doctors recommend that no one under the age of 26 should use marijuana, because marijuana inhibits the growth of means, of brain cells until the brain is fully formed. Now, when you get older, it also inhibits the growth of Alzheimer's, and it is used by doctors to slow down the development of Alzheimer's in the older gen people because of the same reason: it inhibits brain change. Nobody knows that except doctors. When you allow our young people, especially the gifted young who are 26 and younger, to not be educated in the evils of marijuana until their brain has grown, you're putting them at risk by making them think it's an okay thing to do, by tacitly, in other words, silently saying, "Hookahs are cool." They're not cool. In the Middle East, they are very much associated with the use of marijuana, where alcohol is illegal, and everybody knows it. So that's my concern with the hookah laws. I don't want them to be cool. I don't want them to be accepted unless our young people are fully educated in the dangers of the use of marijuana. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin Akzaki, followed by Marlene Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, and City Councilmember. My name is Kevin Akzaki. I'm the owner of Gaucho's Village and a partner with Hollywood Hookah Lounge. I'm here to mention to you that you should consider treating hookah lounge different than tobacco due to the concentration of tobacco in the hookahs, that's only 0.05%. And there is also tobacco-free hookahs, so that's an option that customers would come and request. There is very possible and available today. Another thing I'd like to mention, that everyone who comes to a hookah lounge, we have a front patio that's available for people to enjoy, the front patio of the restaurant. We have an entire restaurant area that seats 300 people for, free of tobacco, free of smoking and such. Every customer who comes to Hookah Lounge, no matter if it's mine, or if it is Finicia, or the one on Broadway, everybody goes to that place destined to smoke. Hookah is part of the cultural thing. So I ask you to consider treating hookah lounge different than regular tobacco. I used to smoke cigarettes, and with the, the time I became familiar with hookahs, I quit smoking cigarettes and replaced that with hookah. It's much healthier for, for me nowadays. Employment, we provide now, this location, in my hookah lounge in Glendale, we employ eight people, taking, making this illegal, like tobacco would take away employment of eight people, including Chantel. Business, business is slow. We're still going through this tough economy, so I think this is, is helping the, the economy, is helping the business here in Glendale, you're closing the hookah lounge in Glendale, making it more difficult for us to operate. It would just make us, the closing of our business, which will take all the customers who is smoking hookah in Glendale today, they will continue smoking hookah. You're not going to stop them from going to Burbank and Hollywood, which is available. So you're taking away some income from the city as well. Employees come to work in Glendale, and they also go shopping and spend money in Glendale as well. Hours, hours of operation, it starts at 6:00 PM, and it's, at that time, all the businesses are already closed, people went home, and people who come to that destination, they intend to smoke hookah, and everyone around is okay, and they are there for the sole purpose of smoking hookah. I'd like to ask you, when was the last time you took a walk, not drove around Brand Boulevard? When was you, City Councilmember, took a walk and saw how many businesses had shut down due to the bad economy, and how many empty spaces are out there? So I ask you to be pro-business and pro-cultural and take, think about this, this issue. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You. Marlene Gomez, followed by Esther Schiller.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, and members of the City Council. My name is Marlene Gomez, and I am the Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County. This is a coalition of over 50 member organizations, and the coalition supports efforts to protect residents from secondhand smoke where they live, work, and play. I am here this evening to express concern that the council is looking at the possibility of increasing the availability and the public use of hookah in Glendale. According to the California Department of Public Health, secondhand smoke from hookah pipes contains the same cancer-causing chemicals found in secondhand smoke from cigarettes. Smoking hookah for 45 to 60 minutes can be equivalent to smoking 100 or more cigarettes. In addition, the charcoal used in the tobacco heating process produces carbon monoxide, which is a toxin. Research has shown that hookahs deliver three times more carbon monoxide and about the same amount of nicotine as cigarettes. Hookahs also expose their users to 40% more smoke by volume than cigarettes, and yes, smoking hookah can be addictive. In 2005, the World Health Organization issued an advisory note about hookah use, stating that people who smoke hookah pipes or who are exposed to secondhand hookah smoke are at risk from the same diseases that are caused by smoking cigarettes, including cancer, heart disease, and lung disease. Women who are pregnant are at risk of adverse effects that could harm their unborn child if they smoke hookah or are exposed to secondhand smoke of hookah pipes. The advisory note also warned that sharing a water pipe mouthpiece, which is common in hookah establishments, creates a serious risk of transmission of communicable diseases, including tuberculosis and hepatitis. So increasing the availability and the public use of hookah in Glendale would not be good for the health of the community. It would be especially damaging to the young adults of the community, because hookah smoking is increasingly popular among underage youth and young adults. Many of these young people do not believe that hookah smoke is harmful and addictive as cigarettes. If the city council were to establish more public places where hookah can be smoked, that would be a message to the community and to young people that hookah smoking is safe, and it is not a safe activity. Thank you.
You, Esther Schiller, followed by Herbert Milano.
I was hoping for five minutes. I'll do the best I can. Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. My name is Esther Schiller, and I'm Director of Smoke Free Air for Everyone. We're funded by the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health to do this work. In 2008, we conducted surveys of apartment and condominium residents in the city of Glendale. We had several college students helping us, and we asked them to be sure to survey people who smoke. They outdid themselves. Of the 251 Glendale residents who completed the surveys, 30% were people who said they used tobacco products. Actually, the smoking rate in Glendale, according to the LA County Department of Public Health, is half that, only 15%. 38% of respondents said they had tobacco smoke drift into their home in the past year. Of those, almost half said that they live with someone who has a medical condition that could be made worse by the exposure to the smoke, and 80% said they would support restriction of smoking in units. A lot has happened since 2008, and the LA County Department of Public Health did an air quality study in units of people who said they were breathing their neighbors' tobacco smoke. The news conference is, the news conference document is in your packet, and according to the scientific results, toxic tobacco smoke particle levels in these units were like living in a smoky gambling casino. Another recent study showed that children who live in apartments and condominiums that allow smoking have higher levels of tobacco smoke contamination in their blood even when no one smokes in their own unit. This is compared to children living in single-family homes. What that proves is when they're smoking in an apartment or condominium, the smoke is potentially everywhere in the building, and according to the Surgeon General of the United States, there's no safe level of exposure to tobacco smoke. There's a chart in your packet which shows the California cities that have passed housing ordinances which regulate smoking in units. Northern California has surpassed Southern California by far. With regard to enforcement, another enforcement protocol could be requiring landlords to put the no-smoking provision in the lease or contract, but not require the landlord to evict. Contracts are respected by residents, and banning smoking in some or all units is not only a benefit to residents who are trying to quit, it's a benefit to landlords. It will save them money. Preparing a formerly smoked-in unit for the next tenant can cost five times as much as preparing a unit that has not been exposed to tobacco smoke, and there's now an insurance company that will give a 10% discount to apartment and condo buildings that are smoke-free. Thank you.
You, Herbert Milano, followed by Julissa Gomez.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano, and I'm here to address the portion of the ordinance that has to do with multifamily housing in this regulation. First, I want to preface this with the fact that I don't smoke, my wife doesn't smoke, my children don't smoke, and that I promote actively within my tenants my children don't smoke, and that I promote actively within my tenants for those who do smoke to stop smoking, and I have very few who do. My concern has to do with an evaluation of the current ordinance. What information do you have that the current ordinance does not work? How many complaints, documented complaints, do you have on hand that will serve you as a way of validating or justifying a change to the ordinance? I would like to see if some of the data can be presented to you. Because oftentimes, a good ordinance that is not properly applied or supervised or evaluated simply does not need a change. All you need to do is simply enforce it. I would also like to ask if the staff had a meeting with the largest apartment organization in Los Angeles County, the Department Association of Greater Los Angeles. It is my opinion that if the staff is doing their due diligence in getting the opinion of the wide variety of landlords, from those who have a few small units to those who have large ones, to see what the impact of this particular ordinance would have on them, if they have not had this type of conference and evaluation, I would suggest that you postpone it until you do so. Personally, though, I would suggest option C, I think would be the least intrusive in that it allows the vacancies then, as vacancies come up, for those units to become non-smoking. I think perhaps, in my opinion, would be the least intrusive, the one that would be fairly easy to apply, especially if it is applied citywide. I would also like to suggest that the City Council maybe take on additional alternatives to this ordinance. Those alternatives I'm thinking about is the significant increase in smoking that is still occurring at the high school level and with children, and that the city should really start promoting those type of alliances with nonprofits and with the hospitals that would encourage at least families to take up smoking cessation programs. It would be nice if I had those available so I can give my sole tenant who smokes, you know, information as to how they could obtain that kind of assistance. I believe that a program made citywide continually, try to dissuade people from smoking, is will be the best for all. I'd love to see every grandparent be old enough to be able to see their grandchildren graduate from high school. And I think that anyone would support that type of approach, but I don't see enough of that. I see just a lot of regulation that is not followed up, but perhaps you are following up. I would like to know. Thanks.
Julissa Gomez, followed by Nance Perry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Julissa Gomez. I'm with the American Lung Association California. The American Lung Association California is committed to saving lives by improving lung health and promoting and preventing lung disease. We are very concerned over the efforts to expand hookah lounges in the city of Glendale. According, as mentioned before, today, the World Health Organization, smoking hookah for 40 to 60 minutes is equivalent to 100 cigarettes. Hookah secondhand smoke contain the same cancer-causing chemicals found in secondhand smoke from cigarettes. Keeping this fact in mind, it is unfair that hookah lounges and bars are trying to circumvent and take advantages of ambiguities in the workplace law and other laws to allow indoor smoking while other businesses such as restaurants and bars follow the law. A change to Glendale's ordinance will not only, will only negatively affect the health of Glendale residents, service workers, and visitors. We urge you to reconsider in allowing hookahs to operate in the city of Glendale. And I also have a letter from my colleagues at the American Heart Association strongly urging you to prevent the operation of hookah lounges in the city of Glendale. Thank you for your time.
Nance Perry, followed by Roxanne Perez.
I'm Nance Perry. Can you breathe where you live? Because I can't. What's that like? Because of the secondhand smoke in and around my Glendale apartment complex, I can't breathe anything but smoke. I've been an apartment dweller in Glendale for over a decade. I've never lived in a building where the fresh air ordinance was respected or obeyed by smokers. Why? They know they can get away with smoking wherever they want, so they do it. Neighborhood services put up no-smoking signs, which the smokers in my building have torn down and thrown out. Without enforcement, their signs are a joke. My apartment building is on Glen Oaks Boulevard. It consists of 40 units, two buildings around a courtyard. Half the tenants smoke. We do not have air conditioning. The city hasn't okayed it. So we have to open our windows to the outside to get air and hot weather. One tenant in my building absolutely refuses to obey the non-smoking laws. He's been lectured to by the police more than once, neighborhood services, the current and past building owners, and the onsite manager. Nothing has had any effect on his smoking habit. Day and night, he's in the courtyard, the pool area, and the parking lot, smoking defiantly. When I've called the police about him, he's lied to them about smoking in the courtyard area, saying, "I smoke in the parking lot." The police replied, "You can't smoke there, it's illegal." He just walks away from them like they don't exist. It's a game to him, one that only he's enjoying. The police just keep announcing to me, "We can't arrest him, we have to catch him in the act." Well, good luck with that. It takes five minutes to smoke a cigarette and two hours for the police to respond to a call. Enforcing non-smoking laws is low on their list of priorities, as they've also announced to me. Coming from a family full of cops, I know that's true. I've taken to wearing a hospital mask while at home to try and block some of his toxic emissions. It's not entirely effective. I have begun to hold the terry cloth washcloth over my nose and mouth when I walk to and from my car to try and avoid breathing his smoke in the parking lot. And finally, I've taken to calling the police every time I see him light up in public areas. Enforcement by the police is ineffective because they have to see him smoking to give him a fine, and only a fine, nothing else is done. The officers who've come out have asked me to petition you for more clout in the enforcement area. They're lacking the power to have any real effect. So he wins and we all lose. Maybe our lives, if the statistics on the dangers of inhaling secondhand smoke are to be believed. I believe them. I became a cancer patient this year. Between the stress of dealing with and fighting the cigarette smokers in my building, that man in particular, and the secondhand smoke that's everywhere, things are toxic where I live. And now you want to regulate smoking in apartment and condo units? Smoke goes through walls. Allowing it at all is poisoning the rest of us.
Okay, Roxanne Perez, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Basically, I can relate to what the lady said.
Say your name for the record.
I'm sorry.
Your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Roxanna Perez and my family are non-smokers. And basically, I'm here to plead that if it's in your hands to help those of us that don't have a voice or are dealing with, you know, secondhand smoke exposure, to please do so, you know? Every life is worth, you know, saving it, you know, young, elders. I do live on the 900 block north of Glendale Avenue. I moved from an eight-unit building because one of the new tenants that moved next to me was smoking. Neighborhood services, a rep from Neighborhood Services had witnessed this person smoking right outside my unit, you know, where my daughter would do her homework in the living room. She would inhale, you know, the secondhand smoke from this individual. He was approached and he continued to do so. So I took it upon myself to move, except that this new residence, you know, this new building where I live, you know, on my application, I stated, you know, the reason for moving from the other place. And, you know, the owner failed to advise me, you know, that, you know, some people around me smoked. And I'm having to deal with secondhand smoke, but it does filters through, you know, the wall cracks. I do have air conditioning, however, again, it's an old building and I'm just basically, you know, pleading for, you know, our lives and the lives of those other families that are also being exposed to. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Kimberly Sinclair.
My name is Margaret Hammond and I have been an advocate on non-smoking. I have a building, which I got an award, the first one in Glendale, as a non-smoking apartment house. And I think it's just nonsense to be even considering changing a great smoking ordinance. It's not broken. Why fix it? Glendale has gotten recognition and awards nationwide for our ordinance. And I feel, why should I be denied my right to sit outside on a patio just because people who knowingly smoke are taking risks with their lives and the lives of innocent people nearby? And I have them blowing smoke in my face and my space. Why should I have to put up with the secondhand smoke? It's a big killer. Hookah smoking, as you have heard already from health experts, is more addictive and more deadly for young people than regular smoking. And they feel it's a real thing to do, a real fad. I know, I've got young people in that bracket. And I just say, what we need to do is boycott these establishments that feel that they have to enlarge their area to, I mean, the smoking area, in spite of whatever they know about what's happening from secondhand smoke. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, you see every little, you can see every little hamburger joint suddenly adding patio space by using their parking and so that patrons can sit out there and smoke. Now, I know you're saying, "Well, they have to have over 5,000 square feet." Well, you know, they don't pay any attention to that. We know that we're shorthanded in Neighborhood Services. They know all these things and it's not going to do us too much good, you know, that we're going to be facing problems trying to get help with these things. And I do feel sorry for people in apartments that have to put up with smoking. It's, I couldn't do it. I would die because I'm so allergic to it. My husband died at 68 from smoking. His little grandchildren were three and five years old, so he never even got to see them grow up. So you can't tell me he smoked the day he died, had cigarettes in his pocket, and just couldn't give it up. But I'm saying, it is a very addictive and it's a killer. There's no ways about it. I mean, that he was warned he was going to kill him and it killed him. But, and I don't see why the rest of people who are innocent and don't smoke should have to put up with it. I really, truly don't. And I just, I will say, boy, I'll pick it anywhere where there's hookahs or where there's whatever, and I will get people to help me. I know there'll be people out there that will stand with me on this nonsense because I don't like to see young people being dragged or coaxed or whatever into taking up this nasty habit. Thank you.
Kimberly Sinclair, followed by Zarmine Akashian. Sure? Absolutely. Zarmine.
My name is Zarmine Akashian and I'm a registered nurse practitioner. I work at Glendale Adventist Medical Center, so I'm representing the hospital. Good evening, Mayor Quintero and Glendale City Council members. I wish to express my concern about the recent interest in reviewing the smoke-free policies in the city of Glendale. I offer my enthusiastic support for the comprehensive smoke-free outdoor policies that are currently in place that protect children, families, residents, and visitors from secondhand tobacco smoke in the smoke-free outdoor areas where people gather to eat, shop, to business, or play in the Glendale, in the city of Glendale. Research indicates that secondhand smoke poses health hazards in outdoor settings. Over 75 communities in California already have laws in their municipal codes that ban smoking where people congregate. Comprehensive protections include outdoor areas for work, recreation, public events, dining, bus stops, or service areas like ATMs and movie ticket lines. The dangers of secondhand smoke are well documented. The U.S. Surgeon General has concluded that breathing even a little secondhand smoke poses a risk to your health. Forty years of federal, state, and institutional research demonstrate the scientific evidence which indicates that there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Breathing even a little secondhand smoke can be harmful to your health, especially for children, senior citizens, and adults with asthma or other chronic illnesses. I'm also concerned about the possibility of hookah lounges being allowed to open for business in our city. Make no mistake about it, no matter how it is flavored or filtered, the nicotine in the hookah is addictive. Research from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention says that 45-minute to one-hour session of smoking hookah is equivalent to smoking 100 cigarettes. That research also indicates that children as young as 12 are lured to smoking hookah because of the variety of flavors that mask the addictive ingredients and this leads many to start smoking other plant-based materials. I encourage the City Council to protect and maintain their policies for smoke-free outdoor areas that protect non-smokers, reduce tobacco trash, and set a smoke-free example for our youth. I also ask the City Council and City Manager to seek new economic development with business enterprises that reflect the healthy and wholesome environment currently enjoyed by Glendale residents and visitors who come to our city from throughout the region. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Kimberly Sinclair, followed by Stephen Gallegos.
Thank you for that. I'm Kimberly Sinclair. I teach health and guidance, well, health and psychology at Glendale High. And today I asked my students, the psychology students who are juniors and seniors, who had been inside a hookah bar and stayed there. And three or four of them raised their hand out of 38 students. And then they said, "Oh, no, wait a minute, that was in Burbank." So because the hookah bars are not really open and in business in Glendale, they're not going in them. And I would say that it looks very suspicious and interesting that this item has been deferred three times and that it's the last item now. I know that politics and tobacco have historically been linked together, but all of these actions just look very suspicious and interesting. Everybody in this room, with the exception of Councilwoman Friedman, because she wasn't here yet, and Mr. Toa, I don't know you, but all the rest of us worked very hard to pass a model ordinance that positively affects the health of the Glendale citizens. And now we're potentially taking a step back. If we make exceptions to the ordinance now, when do we stop? I live in Sunland and there are seven marijuana dispensaries in a mile span. You could walk from one to the other if you could remember where they were. Do we want to change Glendale Healthy Cities model? Do we want to ignore the science of tobacco-related diseases to appease a small minority? Do we want to continue the tobacco industry's hold on our politicians? I strongly urge you to take care in your vote when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Stephen Gallegos, followed by Lenore Solis.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. My name is Stephen Gallegos. I was born here, I live here, and I work here in Glendale. In reading the staff report, it talks very callously about tobacco use in the hookah lounges and also for the apartments. And basically makes it sound like it's just an inconvenience for people who do smoke or people who want to smoke. And in this entire staff report, there's no science. I mean, if you're talking about tobacco and you're talking about hookah and you're talking about secondhand smoke, which is a toxic air contaminant that we've heard from, by the state of California, I think you really need to add science in this because the staff report is supposed to give you the, all the information that you need to make the best decisions for the citizens of this city. So I've brought science. There is a huge body of evidence that shows that not only the secondhand smoke that people are getting in their apartments, but also that hookah is very addictive. Right here, this first study, determinants of hookah use among high school students. It says, "Most students first learned about hookah from friends or saw a hookah lounge." The conclusion, "Hookah use is becoming a commonly acceptable behavior among adolescents and risk perception is a significant factor. Presence of hookah lounges are associated with increased hookah use among high school students and should be a target of further regulation." Here's another study from the American Journal of Preventive Medicine, Carbon Monoxide Levels Among Patrons of Hookah Cafes. It says right here, "Individuals who use hookah as..." It says right here, "Individuals who use hookah as a method of tobacco smoking are exposed to high levels of carbon monoxide." And carbon monoxide levels are higher for patrons, um, for both current and non-cigarette smokers. Although users report that they perceive hookah to be less harmful than cigarettes, the greater carbon monoxide exposure for hookah users was, uh, that was observed in this study is not consistent with that perception. So a lot of hookah smokers believe just because it's candy-flavored, it's fruit-flavored, that it's not tobacco. It is tobacco. Um, uh, here's another study that says, "The prevalence of water pipe tobacco smoking uh, among the general and specific populations." It says, um, "A total of 38 studies were conducted. The highest prevalence of current hookah smoking was among school students, and the prevalence of current water pipe and hookah smoking among university students was high." There's many more studies. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenora Solis followed by Sharon Collins.
Lenora Solis, resident of Glendale. I'm here to support some changes to your current ordinance. I believe in the freedom of choice, and I think we still live in a democracy where if you want to go to a hookah lounge and you're of age, then you should be able to do that. I think that, uh, smoking areas and outside dining areas are appropriate, especially since we had smoking in outside dining areas before you initiated the audience and, the ordinance in 2008. It was very difficult. I saw, I saw a particular restaurant that I frequent often at night, I mean, it was empty because people could smoke outside. And little by little, people started coming back and they smoke, even though they're not supposed to. And I think in terms of multifamily, I don't live in a multifamily unit. I do live in a single family and the people next door smoke, and they smoke in their backyard, and the backyard smoke, cigars filters up into, into a, a room, and so it's, it's, it's as if somebody was smoking inside our home. So I know it's, 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 it's very difficult, but I think that if you are a, a renter, you should go to your landlord and say, hey, you want to give me a lease that says I'm going to pay this much on this day? Well, I wanted to say also that there's not going to be any smokers living around me because I don't want, I want to live in a smoke-free building. So I think the, the renters need to empower themselves and tell the landlords, you want me to live here? I want to live smoke-free. Because it doesn't matter what ordinance you, you've already initiated, you've already, we, we have the ordinance since 2008, and you hear people over and over again talking about, about how their fellow renters, their neighbors, in their little community and their apartment buildings are ignoring the ordinance and they continue to smoke. So they really need to go to the landlord and say, hey, are you going to enforce this or not? Get this guy out. So I, I support the changes. I think it's, it's, it's good for business. I mean, I'm a small business owner and I know that these are tough times, and I don't think anybody's ever forced to. I've never, I'm 53, I've never been to a hookah lounge, I have no desire to go to one. I do know people that have gone, but I don't know of anyone that's ever been forced to go or anyone that's ever been forced to smoke a cigarette. So I think that, you know, if, if somebody, I, I understand living in a multifamily unit, that's difficult. I definitely think the, the renters should empower themselves and go to their landlords. But in terms of outside dining, nightclubs, hookah lounges, hey, freedom of choice. Thank you.
Sharon Collins, that's my final card.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Collins. I am a resident of Glendale, and I'm here to support more restriction on smoking in multifamily units, including condominiums. This is really a personal issue for me. My father died of lung cancer in 1984 after a lifetime of heavy smoking. He left behind my mother and three teenage siblings. He was just 62 years old. My younger sister died of cancer in 1980, excuse me, 19, yes, in, excuse me, in 2008. She did not smoke. However, she was exposed to secondhand smoke from my father's habit and during her college and her postgraduate years. She left behind a husband and two small children. They were only eight and 10 years old. My family and I have experienced the painful outcomes of cigarette smoking. I'm very concerned about the exposure to cigarette smoking. I currently live in a condominium that's quite old. The building shares a lot of common space, and there's recently been a very lovely woman, but a cigarette smoker move in right next door to me. When she smokes in her unit, the smoke leaks into my unit, it leaks into the ceiling area because we share a common ceiling, and when she opens her door, the smoke goes into the enclosed stairwell. She is trying very hard to follow the rules, but there is no way that smoke does not leak out of her unit into the common areas and into my unit. Because of my personal experience with the loss of my family members, I would like to ask you to consider, please, restricting the ordinance even further for multifamily residents. Thank you.
Okay, that's the final card. Comments or questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Weaver.
No question.
I'm ready to make comments.
Uh, we heard about high school students going to hookah lounges and, uh, young people using, are there restrictions in terms of age similar to cigarettes to hookahs?
Uh, my understanding, Councilwoman Menucha, is there are, with respect to the retail sales, there are restrictions on sale of, of alcohol, all, all tobacco products to minors.
So anyone going to a hookah lounge has to be 18 or older?
Any, any, any place that's selling, uh, hookah, that's correct. That's correct.
All right. I just want to clarify that.
It, I just want to make clear, it doesn't mean though that an establishment's open generally to the public, um, uh, like a coffee shop or restaurant necessarily is closed, is, uh, if it has, for example, outdoor smoking, would prohibit minors necessarily, and so I'm not sure.
But if, but if they sell tobacco, they have to check ID, basically?
Correct.
Mr. Weaver.
Okay, I already have my opinions on this. Now, as a council member, I have a fiscal responsibility and a responsibility for the health and safety of the residents of this community. I've never smoked. My father smoked, was a chain smoker. He had a heart attack when I was a baby and the doctor said, if you don't stop smoking immediately, you'll be dead in six months. He lived till I was 19, then he had another heart attack. By my way, this would be a smoke-free city. Not one. There's absolutely no value in it, but that is not reality. Uh, I started this whole thing in 2007 trying to create a smoking ordinance, and it was hell on earth to get through that. We have one. This is here tonight because council members asked for it to be brought onto the council again. I didn't ask for it. Since 2008, I've received numerous, numerous letters from people begging us to prohibit smoking in apartments and condos, the impacts the secondhand smoke had. Just throwing up our hands, no way to enforce. But it's here today, and while I may not, please, however, the way I, the way you think, I'm going to try to enforce the ordinance tonight. You want it on here? Okay, let's tough, tighten it up. I read a lot on hookahs. I spent a few hours on the internet, reading all about hookahs, the impact, so much of it's already been said, the Mayo Clinic, the World Health Center, everything, um, talks about, uh, health risk of hookahs, smoking, lung cancer, oral cancer, uh, asterisk, esophageal carcinomas, uh, impaired pulmonary function, heart disease, reduced fertility, low, uh, birth weight of babies, hepatitis or herpes. Goes on and on and on. Now, if people want to kill themselves, do it in a certain area, fine. Me, the main reason there's hookah lounges, it might be a cultural thing, but we live in Glendale, California. If you want to do it, do it in isolation, most part. It's a bunny maker, I found that out. Some places, restaurants, live and die on, uh, the hookahs. I've read their history, clear back, way back in ancient times. As far as the hookahs, if you can find any place in Glendale that has 5,000 square feet of outdoor space, which is more than twice the size of my house, have at it. I don't know if there is even one. You want to make it 5,000? Fine. You prove to the city you got 5,000, and then how are you going to control it? And we will measure that restaurant, we will find the space, and then we will monitor it. Those people that want to do the hookahs, go to that location, wherever it is, and have at it. Kill yourself. That's exactly what you're doing. But I will not change the designation, making hookahs different from cigarettes. It's all the same, the code is that way, and I will not vote for any change in that. On apartments and condos, start with option three, C3. Smoking will be prohibited in all new multi-unit buildings, whether apartments or condos. That takes care of the Lux, it takes care of the one at Maryland and, um, yeah, uh, Maryland and Broadway that's going up, it takes care of the Triangle Project, it'll take care of all those for starters, just starters. And also support, when a smoker moves out, you have to designate it as non-smoking. That's, that's a step up from what we have. I'd like more, but you're not going to get more. And remember, this ordinance back here again for change, it can come back again in two or three years, to strengthen it even more. Time will tell if what we do here tonight, if we do anything, helps the situation. By my way, I'd like to, uh, see that a percentage of the units be designated, smoking permitted, smoking permitted, smaller number all the time, over a number of years. I don't know what that would be. The whole idea is, I sat with staff, talked on it, and we got into very heated arguments. Talked about all the letters I received, emails over the years, we've all received them. How come we can't help these people? They're trapped. And I keep telling, this is an enforcement issue, how do you do it? And I sat there pretty loudly saying, I don't give a blank, blank. If it's tough for staff to do, do it. Obviously ended up with a little caveat, well, I won't be here in five years, so let somebody else worry about it. But the, the point is, it's a tough nut to crack. Now, if there are ways to do that, as Friedman talked about, there's other ways, then I want to know them and I want this back here again for that change. I hope that staff will go, check with other cities, see how they have handled it, if there's way to empower a resident to take these idiots to court that like to violate clean smoking ordinance. We're, what, we're the top-rated city in LA County terms? We've got an A? We're the best around, but it's not good enough. We have to increase. So that's where I stand on it right now. Maybe say, well, I shouldn't say any hookahs. You're not going to see an ordinance created that, that eliminates all the hookahs in town. Anymore, you're going to be able to eliminate all cigarette smoke, not today, not this year. Got to nip away at it. So increasing it, hoping that someday we can help these poor people living in apartments and condos even more than we, we can here tonight. Theoretically, I guess, council could sit here and put the most stringent patrols on smoking in apartments and condos. What would happen? I don't know if we'd be faced with a lot of lawsuits or whatever. I don't think this council is going to go that direction, not yet. Let's make a step. Let's tighten it a little more. That's where I am here tonight. Thank you.
Can you have a, you, Mr.?
Uh, it says policy area be allow hookah lounge as a permitted use? It's not, they have, it's not a permitted use at this time?
It's not.
What's the difference between a hookah lounge and a cigar lounge?
At this moment, uh, there's no difference between hookah, hookah use, or a pipe, or a cigarette, or any other instrument of smoking. We treat them all the same as smoking.
Okay, and why would you, why would you want to treat hookah lounges differently?
We're, we're not, we would not want to, but if the council wanted to create a use for a hookah lounge, that would, the way to do it would be through the zoning ordinance. We're not saying that the council should. We were asked to look at options and that's an option.
Can you smoke a cigar in a hookah lounge?
Uh, by definition, if you wanted us to create a hookah use, then we would have to define that in the zoning code, in my, in my sense would be.
My question is, if, if I go to a hookah lounge, can I smoke a cigar as opposed to a hookah, in a, in a hookah lounge?
If we created that?
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed? I, so I can't smoke? So it doesn't make sense if we treat it the same, why?
We treat it the same right now. Uh, by creating a hookah use, which we do not have in the zoning code at this moment, then you would separate hookah from other types of smoking. At this moment, we treat them all the same.
Okay, we treat them all the same, but, but in a hookah lounge, which, which is basically a smoking lounge to me?
Uh, correct.
That's what it is?
Correct.
Uh, why couldn't I smoke a cigar as opposed to a hookah?
Uh, at this moment, nobody's, uh, well, because we wouldn't recommend it and, and we would only, and we're not recommending anything.
It's not a recommendation, I mean, by, by code.
By code, right now, you could not, and it's in a hookah lounge that, which is only allowed in 25% of the outdoor smoking area.
Okay, somewhere, somewhere that is allowed to be a smoking area.
That's, in the smoking.
Can I smoke a cigar or a hookah or a cigarette?
Yes, you could. In the, in the permitted area right now, you could.
Right now, so.
Unless the owner has different requirements.
Right, no. And I'm not concerned about the owner.
Right.
So I'm trying to determine, why do we need to kind of specify what a hookah lounge is?
That this would be.
If it's a smoking, if it's a smoking establishment where, you know, there's an outdoor patio area that is allowed to smoke.
I think you had your, and I think you had your finger on it earlier, that it would be basically a smoking lounge. You would go there expressly to smoke hookah, and we don't have that today. You could go to a store, it's, it's the world of hookah, and all you would do is go in there and, and smoke hookah, and anything else would be ancillary to the smoking of hookah. And in that, yeah, we could create, um, we could create that use to allow cigars, cigarettes, pipes, give it a name, whatever you want.
But I thought we have that and we treat it all the same. That's, that is my, the crux of my question.
Let me, let me just, right now.
Hold on, just, uh, right now, what we treat all the same is smoking in 25% of the area. This would be something that goes beyond the 25% as a smoking.
The hookah lounge that they're talking about, how is that permitted?
I, I don't know that they have a, a hookah lounge today. They have a restaurant where smoking is ancillary to the other use within the confines of the existing law.
I guess the question is, does the council want to make hookah a, a standalone primary use versus continue it as an ancillary use to a restaurant, bar, tavern, et cetera?
That's exactly it right there.
Okay, when we have cigar shops on brand, what use are they?
They're retail sales.
They're retail as, uh, sales, and they're restrict, and the, the, the way that we regulate them is through the fresh air ordinance as a smoking area, uh, that only, uh, smoking within a, a particular part of that is, is allowed and other types of activity are not allowed. In other words, they, we are still maintaining conformance with state law that people cannot serve other things that would expose the servers and other people who would come for other consumption of other things to secondhand smoke. At this moment, they're restricted.
And so basically, those, those separate rooms are only available to the patrons and not to any of the employees, so that's how the, the local ordinance comply, ensures compliance with the state law.
So I'm still, I'm still not.
If I may explain why the hookah lounge use, I guess the question is coming, why are we even separating the hookah lounge use in the staff report?
Right, from a smoking.
The reason that we were asked to bring in the staff report was request from certain businesses to consider hookah lounge or hookah use in cer, as a separate use because that is a, a business activity that they would like to have. At this moment, we have been telling them that you may not have that business activity because we, we consider hookah use, the. because we, we consider hookah use the same as any other smoking, uh, action, and it's only restricted in the 25% of the smoking areas as designated in the, in the, in the Glendale municipal code. Because, so those businesses have requested to identify...
Restaurants?
Outside restaurants.
Outside restaurants. So the only reason that's in the staff report is that businesses have requested that, to be identified as a separate business activity. And if the council was inclined to identify hookah use as a separate business activity, the only way to address it would be through the land use or zoning code ordinance as a separate activity, and that would separate it from other types of smoking.
And, and how would that apply as it relates to the state law in terms of employees serving in a smoking environment, or...
Councilmember Manukian, as we, as we identified in the staff report, as, as it pertains to an indoor hookah use, we don't think it's viable, we don't think we could structure a way so that it occurs indoors and also complies with state law, because of the requirement that employees not be...
Outdoor it could.
Outdoor it could, and that's...
State law doesn't apply to outdoor?
Correct. It doesn't apply to enclosed, uh, non-enclosed space. Essentially, outdoor.
I have a couple of comments. I, I grew up around hookahs, I'm from the Middle East, I was born in Beirut, and family members smoked hookah. I'm sure they still do over there, some of my family members. I hope they quit, I don't smoke. Couple of things that were mentioned here that I take objection to, is that hookahs are associated with marijuana use, they're not. Some people might choose to use it that way, but I was, I would, I would say that bongs are associated with marijuana, so, we're clear on that, and that's something that was created here, not in the Middle East. And alcohol is not illegal in the Middle East, you know? It's legal in some countries, but the Middle East is a pretty big area. It's not a little area. It's allowed in Lebanon, Jordan, Libya, Israel, Egypt, I don't know about Egypt now, but we'll see how that turns out.
Iraq.
Iraq, yeah, so, no, Saudi Arabia's not allowed.
Dubai?
Dubai might be, yeah. I'm, I'm not opposed to hookahs per se, in terms of smoking, because basically, if you want to outlaw, outlaw smoking, if you can outlaw cigarettes, you should outlaw hookahs. If you're not going to outlaw cigarettes, you're just wasting your time with hookah, you're just, it's like, uh, in, in my opinion, it's a waste of time, let's outlaw cigarettes, and then outlaw everything else, cigars, cigarettes, hookahs, bongs, whatever. There was a, also, a comment made regarding marijuana dispensaries in Sunland. We don't allow marijuana dispensaries in Glendale, so, you know, I certainly would not want it allowed in Glendale, I'll put it that way. In terms of businesses, I think Lenore Solis made, um, of the opinion similar to hers, that businesses, especially during this economic times, difficult economic times, if businesses think that it's, it's a profitable enterprise, and they're willing to go there and have hookah lounges, and have individuals of 18 years and older, who can, who supposedly can make their own decisions in terms of their lives, go there and engage in that activity, you know, that's fine. I am, I am opposed to smoking, the other day, Sunday, my son had a soccer game, after the soccer game, we were driving down from the sports complex to home on Verdugo Boulevard, and we pulled up, we were going to make a left on Mountain, we pulled up at the stoplight, and our windows were down, and we were all sweaty because of, we were, you know, just got done with a soccer game, the car next to us had their windows are all down, and they were smoking in the car, and all the smoke came into our car, so we rolled up the window and we moved on. But I do understand, same thing happened at a bus stop, can they smoke at a bus stop? Because I, my cellphone rang when I was driving, and I pulled up to the curb so I can answer it, because I don't, of course, pick up the phone while driving, and I pulled up right next to a, a bus stop, and there was an individual smoking at the bus stop, and, you know, I started smoking with him, so I had to kind of turn off my phone, drive off to somewhere else, and, you know, call that person again. Is it allowed to smoke at a bus stop? Is it public? It's not allowed? So what could I have done to that individual? He looked homeless, actually, but he had money for cigarettes. What, what would I have to do at that point? You know, tell me later, call the cops, or neighborhood services? In terms, in terms of businesses, I, I just think these numbers, you know, 5,000 square feet, great, you know, I'll vote for it, it's not a issue, but, you know, if, if this room was an outdoor area, and just a city seating area, and there was one individual smoking, smoking in the corner, everyone would be bothered. So, if you're going to have 25% of the area of the individuals smoking, you're really not helping anybody, because, you know, everyone else is pretty much is being affected by that smoke. If you really want to do something, you just outlaw it altogether, or just allow them, allow the businesses to have an area where they can smoke, because even if you have one individual smoking in an outdoor patio, eventually, the wind's going to kind of shift, and you're gonna, you're gonna get smoke in your face, you know? So, I don't see the logic of having a 25% or 50% percent, even more, areas that would allow smoking, you know? Either outlaw it, or allow it, it's, because smoke travels and, and it will get in your face whether you like it or not, if you're in an outdoor area where they allow smoking. So, as far as, as far as apartment complexes are concerned, I am, I believe that, I drove away from the smokers, but if you're living in an apartment, you can't drive away from it. You have the option of asking before you move into an apartment, is it a smoking or a non-smoking apartment? I think you should, if you're, if you're, if you're affected, or you're allergic to smoke, or you don't like it, I'm sure those who don't smoke don't like it. But I do believe that, you know, making all new condos, apartments, and everything non-smoking, I think that's a, that's a good policy. I, I would support that. I would not support making existing units, forcing them to have all of their units non-smoking. I, I would rather have, give them an incentive, not, not to rent it to smokers, as opposed to trying to force them, because whenever you try to force something, you have to have the enforcers, and the enforcers come from the city, we just cut 100, approximately 140 positions from the city, which we could not fund. So for us to enforce anything, we would need to hire more people. I, I just think that giving incentives, do we still have the annual inspections of the multifamily units?
For fire services?
No, no, for maintenance...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, do we still have that?
No, we eliminated that as part of the budget cuts.
Really? So, so now we're going to enforce smoking ordinance, while we're eliminating, maintaining the, the stock, the housing stock for example. I don't know how, I don't know how you would enforce anything. I, again, I would support making new multifamily housing, whether condos or, or apartments, I would support them being non-smoking, so that's my...
Frank? Before I make my comments, Mr. Manukian, would you mind if you could just clarify for me, on the hookah issue, outdoor smoking issue, what you were advocating, because I wasn't really clear? Did you want to allow then the hookah outdoors, or keep it the same, or...
Yeah, I would be in favor of allowing them. But if the council, as a majority, feels it's necessary to have 5,000 square feet and 50%, I would go along with that as well, but, you know, having the 25%, in my opinion, doesn't help. That's, that's, that's the, you're either going to do away with it completely, or just allow them to smoke, because it's the same thing whether it's 25% or 100% in my opinion.
Thanks, thanks for the clarification. So, my thoughts, I think we have a great ordinance that we're rightfully proud of, at least many of us are very proud of it, but I do believe it should be changed. And the reason is, because I think that there's a lot of people out there who are not being protected from secondhand smoke, where it affects them most, and where they can't escape it, which is in their apartments, condos or apartments. Before I get to that, let me talk about hookah for a second. I don't see the reason to treat hookah differently than any other type of cigarette, of any type of smoke, I think it should be treated exactly the same. I've said that before, I'll say it again, I believe that our existing ordinance should apply to it, and I, I would not support creating a new use to allow hookah in a place where we don't allow cigarettes. I do support the change for the 5,000 and above, because to me, the ordinance is about protecting people from secondhand smoke, and when you have an area that size, you still would be required to have, I think it's 1,000 square feet of non-smoking, and that's a huge area, that's just a little under the size of my home. So I'm, I'm okay with that, because I think it still provides non-smokers protection. And in addition, I don't think we have any restaurants that have 5,000 square feet.
Say that, under the proposed draft ordinance, 5,000 square feet or more outdoor dining, 50, up to 50% may be designated as smoking, which would mean 50% would still be designated non-smoking in this case.
But it would still be 2,500 square feet, correct. Which is, you know, twice the size of my house. So that's a very large area, and within there, I believe that non-smokers would be protected from secondhand smoke as, as best you can. So moving to the apartments, I feel very strongly that we are not protecting people that are in their homes. And I think that we can do that without pain by requiring, not as of 2017, but as of now, apartment owners to at least come up with a plan for what units are going to be non-smoking, and it should be three-dimensional, so it shouldn't just be the bottom floor, because the smoke changes, but it, you know, if you're going to do it on the top floor, it needs to go below as well. So maybe, depending on the size of your building, it could be bottom floor, but I think that they need to be stacked, you know, because the smoke moves around. And not to be kicking people out, because that would just, you know, that's just cruel and unworkable, and I would never support that, but through attrition. So over time, as people move out, those units that have been designated to be non-smoking units in the building must only be rented to non-smokers. So, a person moving into those buildings could be able, could see that map and see how close they are to the smoking section, they would also know that there may be people there currently who are smokers, but that over time, at least if you're in a building where you're in that smoking section, you know that no one's going to move in who's a smoker, so that gives you some protection. I think that's the best way to do it. I don't know what percentage would be the right percentage, I don't know if it's half the unit, if it's a third of the unit, if it's a quarter of the unit, I'm not sure, but it needs to be enough so that people who are really, cannot stand that secondhand smoke, can get themselves into a unit that's far enough away from the smokers so that they have some protection. I know that we have some buildings now that are fully non-smoking buildings, because the owners of those buildings have taken it upon themselves to do that, and that's great. And hopefully, this would encourage more owners to move in that direction. But I don't think it's realistic to change the entire city overnight to non-smoking, we have a lot of people that are smokers, I think this is the easiest way to do it. In terms of the new buildings and making them all non-smoking, you're not going to be able to enforce that any better than you can in a building that's, you know, half and half. I mean, it's going to be a difficult thing to enforce, that's why I'd like the city attorney to bring back this civil roundy idea, because I understand that it's a much easier way for people to deal with people that are violating the smoking ordinance in their buildings. And I'm very curious to hear the, how other cities have been finding that, in terms of the smoking ordinance. I'm glad to hear that with other types of ordinances, that it works, because it drastically lowers the standards that someone would have to have to get civil remedy to somebody who's breaking the ordinances. And that would, if we pass this non-smoking unit ordinance, it would apply both to people who are smoking in those non-smoking units, you know, or if they have a guest over, as well as people that are breaking the law by smoking in the common areas, or close to your windows, and those kinds of things. Because the city will, cannot enforce this, I mean, they just can't, as much as we'd like to. To try to be everywhere to catch people when they have that five minutes where they're smoking, it's just not going to happen. But this is a way that if you can, I, from what I hear, that if you can document it's happening, you can actually have a court order for them to stop, or even a civil fine, or I'm not exactly sure how far it goes, but I think that we should explore that, because it adds some more teeth to what we already have. And I would hope that we are enforcing as much as we can, and that if the police are really catching people in the act, and they're breaking the ordinance, that they are issuing those citations. And, you know, maybe when this comes back and we hear about enforcement, we can hear about some of those numbers, if those sorts of citations have been increasing, if we're issuing them, if we're not issuing them, I wouldn't mind hearing from the police who give these citations, to hear what their experiences are, and whether they see any way that we can improve this, to where people who are chronically, willfully disregarding the ordinance can be cited for that. So, I would be for the immediate creation of non-smoking blocks in buildings, or immediate, you know, once we decide what that would look like, and that they are done over time through attrition, to where the apartment owners could not rent them out again to someone unless they agree to be non-smoking, that we look into the civil remedy enforcement, that we look at our own enforcement to be sure it's efficient as far as, as effective as far as we can make it. I'm fine with the 5,000 and up, you know, outdoor area, but I am not for treating hookah any differently than we currently treat it under our current ordinance. I think that all tobacco should be treated, created equally, and I'm not for loosening those standards with regard to hookah, or creating a new permitted use for it. Thank you.
Thank you. First, a little background, how did we get here? This was something that came up about three years ago, and we came up with our outdoor dining, smoking in the outdoor dining area rules, primarily based on a report and research that came from the University of Berkeley, that said that a 10-foot distance between a smoker and a non-smoker drastically reduces the impact that the secondhand smoke has. So when you read our fresh air ordinance, and you see the 10-foot separation, or a physical barrier requirement, that's where that came from. The 25% figure was completely arbitrary, that's something that the council came up with, and we've thought, what would be the approximate split between smokers and non-smokers in an outdoor dining area, so that there are enough seats for the non-smokers to enjoy their meal, and enough for the smokers to have a seat and to smoke either a cigarette or a hookah? We mentioned that, basically, this was arbitrary, there was no science in coming up with that, that split. We thought, based on our experience as individuals who go out in the community, that that's what, that's what the approximate balance is between the smokers and the non-smokers. I think we were wrong on that. It is the important point that anyone wishing to have a seat in a restaurant and not have smoke within, and not be seated in a smoking section, be able to do that. So what we have are a few hookah lounges, and I, I shouldn't say hookah lounge, that's an improper term, certain restaurants that have outdoor dining, that have a smoking section and a non-smoking section, who are completely inundated with individuals who wish to smoke, and completely underwhelmed with the demand for smoke, for non-smoking seats. So you've got a lot of people who want to smoke, whether it's hookah, or whether it's a cigarette, vying for that, those 25% of the non, of the smoking seats, while the rest of the restaurant, 75% is hardly used. What I hear is that that's a problem, it's not fair, it is completely serving the patrons who wish to have a non-smoking environment, but there's a, there's a war for the seats, for the smoking section, why can't that be adjusted? What staff came up with was a position where there would be so much, if the restaurant owner could provide so much seating, up to 25,000, 2,500 square feet for the non-smokers, and if he wanted to provide an equal amount of seating for the smokers, then that should be a fair split, because 2,500 square feet is a lot of... be a fair split. Because 2,500 square feet is a lot of seats. And I even think that that, that may be providing, even the 50-50 balance may be a little bit too much skewed towards the non-smokers. But this is a work in progress. If our residents' tastes for smoking change, and there's a greater demand for the smoking seats, and a lesser demand for the non-smoking seats, we should be able to make that switch, so long as there are enough seats for the non-smokers, and they're separated by 10 feet. Again, the 10 feet is something that the University of Berkeley researchers came up with. So I'm fully willing to support this adjustment to the outdoor dining. If a, and I didn't, I haven't been to the Gaucho Village, I don't know how large your area is, but if you aren't at that 5,000 square foot threshold, you're still stuck at the 25%. If you do have that size of 5,000, you can have 2,500 square feet of non-smoking. I think that's totally fair. If at all, there's a problem, and again, if this passes and there's a problem, I want the residents to let us know that I wanted to get into a restaurant, and I wanted a non-smoking section, and there weren't enough seats for me. That's something we should know. And that would tell me we've got a problem. We've overcompensated for this, this figure that we've come up with. And it's not research. We haven't sent out our staff to poll, how many people are waiting for non-smoking, how many people are waiting for smoking. Again, this is, in many respects, a trial and error that we're doing. But the important thing is that we're trying it, and if it's an error, we should know. Please let us know. So I'm happy in adopting that ordinance, where should a restaurant have 5,000 square feet or more of outdoor dining, the 2,500 can be used for smoking, and the other 2,500 for non-smoking. Now, the problem with the, with the multifamily units, I have recently lived in a multifamily unit. And, once in a while, the lady below me would have a son that would come and visit, and he would be a smoker. Boy, I would know when that guy came in, and I would know when he left. I would, I would get that cigarette smoke in my clothes, I would get it in the carpet, in the sofas. It was pretty raunchy. So I completely sympathize with, with that. And I was really mad. I'm going, God, they can't smoke. We've got the fresh air ordinance. And then I, you know, looked it up and said, oh, well, he's not smoking outside on the patio, he's not smoking on the balcony, he's not smoking in the common area, he's smoking in his room. So he's completely allowed to do that. I was really, I didn't know what to do at that point. I said, wow, this is, this is a problem. And then, I said, well, what if he really, what if it was against the, the ordinance? What was I willing to do? I, city council member, former mayor, was I going to go on this, you know, knock on this lady's door and say, lady, you know, your son is smoking, or you're smoking, and I'm going to call the police on you? That doesn't do a lot for, you know, neighborly respect. In fact, if it wasn't a little old lady, if it was a big husky guy, he may pop me in the nose and say, mind your own business. So I appreciate some of the trepidation that, that residents have in approaching people who are violating the strict terms of the fresh air ordinance, and who are intimidated in going up to a gentleman or a young person who is smoking and violating the law. But let's take it a step further. I see him violating. I call neighborhood services. How long does it take to smoke that cigarette? Let's say he's a chain smoker. Let's say he puts three cigarettes in a row. I don't smoke cigarettes. Is it about two, three minutes a cigarette? Four minutes a cigarette? So in 10 minutes, in 15 minutes, he's had his nicotine fix, and he's gone, and half hour later, you know, neighborhood services pulls up, of which we have only three inspectors available for this, by the way, not just dedicated to this, for all sorts of issues throughout the city. Or the police come up, and, you know, that's the last thing they want to do, because we're putting the pressure on them to catch the burglars, and to stop the speeding, and the kids running through the stop signs, and the texting, and all that other stuff. You know, okay, where's the problem? Well, this guy was smoking. Well, where is he now? I don't see him smoking. So, you know, they take off. So enforcement is a big problem. I'd love to tighten down on this. But I think enforcement is an issue. I would like to look into the, the self, what's it called, self-enforcement?
Civil.
Or the civil enforcement. Again, that carries with it a lot of, I mean, you have to be a brave person to, to, you know, finger your neighbor and say, I'm taking you to court, and there's a $200 fine, and I've got pictures of you. Holy cow, you know, there goes a key down my car, there goes the air out of my tires, maybe Fifi disappears. I mean, things, things happen.
You have Fifi in your apartment?
No, but I'm being, I'm being, you know.
You have any one of your ideas?
But what I would like to, to suggest, that I think it comes back to the landlord then. The landlord who runs the building, who manages the building, I think that someone who has a unit, and who is affected by secondhand smoke, I would like us to adopt a, an ordinance, whereas infusion of cigarette smoke and odors into an adjacent, into your unit constitutes a nuisance per se. A nuisance per se, which permits the tenant to break his lease, if there is a lease, at no expense or no harm to him. In a sense, interfering with your, they call it the quiet enjoyment of your unit. In this case, it's not the quiet enjoyment, it's the healthy enjoyment, or the odorless enjoyment of your unit. That's going to let the landlord know that if you've got a smoker, or a group of smokers, that your good tenants, presumably the non-smokers are good tenants, could leave your unit, despite having a year's lease, or a six-month lease, or a two-year lease, solely on the basis of the cigarette smoke entering the unit. I think that's a large disincentive to the landlord, to start mixing smoking units and non-smoking units. And I think the free market will take care of itself at that point. Is that the landlord would like to segregate all the non-smokers from the smokers, and he can decide his own mix. If he wants to have, if he wants to have a smoking building, you know, so be it. Let it be stated in the lease that this is a smoking building. If he wants to have a non-smoking building and be relieved of any sudden departure of a tenant from the smoke coming into the unit, then he should make that decision himself. But the real problem here is the enforcement. We can't, as a city, have a, you know, a police force, or a neighborhood service force immediately on call to stop the smokers. It's just, we just can't do it. We don't have the manpower, especially now when we've cut back so much. So this is a slight twist, it's a little different idea. I know I had a briefing with staff on this, and the light bulb hadn't gone up above my head. I'm not sure if you'll agree that it's a light bulb, but something up there is buzzing. It may be, it may be an option that we can sort of shift the burden back into the, the private sector, for the way they own, manage, and operate their apartment buildings. At the same time, give a non-smoking tenant who is bothered, who does feel obligated to maintain their presence in that building, do to at least a way to get out without any harm or damages for breaking a lease.
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Najarian, if, if that's the direction the council wants us to look at, we would want to look at that, both in terms of the enforceability, how that mechanically would work, and then also to make sure there are no state preemption, state law preemption issues related to landlord-tenant law. So I think those are some things we'd have to look at before we brought, before we brought that back. But if that's the council, the council wants us to look at that, we will look at that as part of the package that we bring back to you eventually.
And that basically, that basically concludes my remarks.
Okay. Well, I'm going to bring up a non-scientific observation, something that I sort of witnessed with my own eyes. In 1890, tens of thousands...
You're listening to me all night?
Later on, later on.
You keep saying I'm the oldest one.
In 1890, tens of thousands of Spanish immigrants from northern Spain, in a green, cold climate with no tobacco use, immigrated to a little city called Tampa, Florida. And they were there for the sole purpose of working in the cigar industry. Cigars were a very big thing throughout the world, and especially in, in the United States. So these young men, and it was mostly men, at least until about the 1940s, these young men, for the first time, began to smoke cigars, because in addition to getting their, their pay, they were also given free cigars to take home. So they literally all became cigar smokers. Within one generation, these young men, and later on, their, their sons, developed the highest incidence of oral cancer in the United States. Tongue and throat cancer. Healthy in every other way, their cousins and brothers that stayed in northern Spain were not afflicted, but those cigar makers in Tampa, Florida, had the highest incidence. And that basically was a fact up until probably the 1960s, late 50s, when people kind of stopped smoking cigars. So the idea of putting a lit, whether it's a hookah pipe, or, and I've done hookah many times, not just in the Middle East, but here in the United States, the idea of putting a lit pipe object in your mouth is going to lead to cancer, period. Any suggestion that because you're smoking something other than tobacco, it's not going to happen? That's just sheer madness. I mean, that's, you may like to do it, and you don't do it that often, but the fact that it is not a healthy procedure. So, in terms of hookah lounges, I'm willing to go with the 5,000 square feet. There's very few venues. I can literally only think of one up by the freeway that might have that much square footage. But I think the 50% is fine. I don't support hookah lounges as a standalone activity. If it's used in conjunction with restaurants, like some of the restaurants that currently are doing it, then I think that's fine, but not a sort of self-supporting destination hookah lounge. I think the idea of a civil enforcement code, I think that's a very good idea. In this era of, of cameras, and cell phones, and so forth, I think residents who are affected, primarily multifamily residents, whether they're condominium owners, which is a different category, because you own that building, or you own that part of the building, as well as the other people. But I think that idea is going to work. And like Mr. Najarian says, it's going to take some guts. But I think people will, will just get sick of it, just get fed up, and go to a small claims court, and, you know, start their action. The building, or rather, the ban on new buildings, that's a slam dunk. I mean, that we need to do, period. They're mostly in the downtown, and so I think they're going to be very, I think the actual owners of the apartment buildings, I think, are going to be very happy that we have this smoking ban. I stayed in a couple of hotels just recently at conferences, and they were basically no smoking in the entire hotel. And there was a little plaque that said you'd be fined if, hey, listen, I'm having a hard time following this. Hold on a minute, and then...
We were agreeing with you.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know. But I'm trying to focus here. I need a hookah, maybe. Then, I also think Mr. Najarian came up with a very good idea, in terms of the nuisance per se, where a, someone with a lease can have some remedy to, to get out of the lease, and or put the landlord on notice, that they're not going to put up with, like one of the speakers mentioned, she was in a building, very happy, and then all of a sudden, someone moved in, and now they're afflicted by, by the smoker. Then, in terms of moving to no smoking sections, I generally support that. I don't know how we're going to do it. It's going to be very difficult. My background, I've done workforce development, I've worked in real estate, and that's going to be very difficult to do. And by the way, one of the issues I had for many, many years with workforce development was placing people in a job, especially in smaller offices, and then those people being subject, this was, you know, years ago, 70s, 80s, 90s, there really weren't any laws at that point, at that point. People being subjected to other employees' smoke, that was a category that was extremely, extremely difficult. But at any rate, I think the no smoking sections are a good idea, how we move to it, how it's enforced, and so forth. It's not going to be easy. For that, I think we should go at least five units and above. I think the best, really, a five-unit building is pretty much an investment. Sometimes you can have a property owner that lives in a building, and rents the other three. So I think five and above would be, would be the category I'd be interested in, and see how we can work with, with no smoking sections. It's not going to be easy to do. Enforcement is a major issue. I get the same emails that everyone else gets. It's not fair to people that don't smoke. And the idea that somehow, well, gee, this is my God-given right to do it, that's great, except you put the burden on the rest of society when you have the kind of health issues that come with smoking, whether it's lung cancer, throat cancer, or heart disease, et cetera. I mean, it's a very real situation for a society that has to contribute to pay money for other people's desire to do something that clearly, maybe back in the 40s, 50s, and before that, there wasn't the sort of scientific studies that have been done. But there's no question that it's not a good idea health-wise. So I think we have some kind of consensus at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
Something with the city attorney, the ordinance that's here at 8A1 is only for the 5,000, which I think we all, I heard we all compared it.
Right.
So we can introduce the ordinance.
Right.
But the other part, we all have some twists on it. I don't know if we have to refine it more.
Well, my next question would be for the planner, I'm going to call him Dr. Phil, for Dr. Phil to synthesize what he heard, and see if we all agree with...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what...
Did you have more comments before you start, Mr. Najarian?
I did. As I was thinking, I mean, and I'm very sorry for any, any disrespect that I may have extended by jumping around here, but I had another idea. And that was perhaps creating a two-tier level of, we already have two tiers, maybe a third-tier level of the non-smoking versus the smoking split, with the understanding that it's always adjustable. I think our goal is to make sure that all non-smokers and all smokers have a table to sit at, at the restaurant of their choosing, so long as they're separated by the proper distance, and that they don't interfere with each other.
It's outdoors.
Outdoors, yeah. This is, this is all outdoors. Could, could I throw that to you? And I had some numbers, and you said it's too detailed, and too, could I suggest you come with an alternative, or an option, with perhaps, we, right now, we would suggest a two-tier, below 5, and 5 or above. Could we add a third tier in there and adjust the percentages to some level?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, would you like me to respond right now? I could, if that's what you're asking.
I'm not interested in splitting it again.
If, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to respond to that?
You can go ahead and respond.
So, the question is, what, what staff has proposed is that for outdoor dining areas of 5,000, 5,000 square feet or more, you could have up to 50% of the area be designated smoking. The council may, may direct staff to say, for outdoor dining areas of 2,000 square feet and more, it could be a certain percentage. And then 5,000 and more could be 50%, or if you wanted to change the percentage. So that would be, because 2,000 square feet seems like a, a particular critical mass, that a lot of the outdoor dining areas happen to be able to participate in. The 5,000 square feet or more would be a handful, if, if that, of, of businesses that could participate. The 5,000 square feet or more would be a handful, if that, of businesses that could participate. So to me, if you wanted to break two different breaking points, those would be the square footage. And if you wanted to change the 50% to more, perhaps at 5,000 square feet, and then do the 2,000 square feet be, say, 50% or something less, that might be something the council would want to give direction to us. And if you'd like to hear about what that would be, the magic number, I don't know what the magic number is, but I could suggest some things.
I'm not interested in that.
You didn't understand that?
No, no, he's not interested in it. He understood it, but he's not interested in it.
I can picture 5,000 because it's twice as big as my house. Now that's...
Well, begging the indulgence of my colleague, if you could at least bring that as an option that we could look at at the time the... Can it be introduced at five and then have a modification to the square footage?
If I may, just to briefly answer Mr. Najarian's question. The answer is yes, we can introduce ordinance this way as long as it's not more, it's not going to be more expansive than what's being introduced, which is at 5,000 square feet, 50%. At less than 5,000, it's 20. So if you have something in the middle where you say, you know, for example, if it's 2,000 square feet, the number's going to be something different.
What if we wanted to expand?
The requirement just be that it's germane. And so I think my only concern is that we don't, you introduce something and then what actually comes back, what's suggested when we come back for adoption of the ordinance, it's not germane. You know, my view is it's all germane.
Yeah, I would recommend that we just do the 5,000. And then when he comes back with all of the different possibilities, then we can deal with this as well as other issues.
Let me introduce the ordinance then at 8A1. I asked Mr. Mayor on the other, we all seem to want to leave.
All right, well, next, before we even introduce the ordinance, let's have...
She said he did.
All right, you just did, great. Now, now that you're done, let's have, let's have Mr. Hagani kind of synthesize what he heard from the different...
Mr. Mayor, I heard actually a spectrum of things. But I'm going to synthesize and focus only on the areas that I think there is some level of consensus. I think there is some, I heard some level of, a good deal of consensus on the idea of outdoor dining area of 5,000 square feet and more being able to have 50% designated non-smoking. And with the caveat that Mr. Najarian just introduced, that if you wanted to amend that to say, outdoor dining area of 2,000 square feet and more may have one threshold and 5,000 square foot and more a second threshold. That is, that seems to be an area that the council may be able to reach consensus actually tonight. With regard to multifamily, there was absolutely no consensus or interest in introducing hookah lounges as a new use. So therefore, I actually recommend that we set that aside and have no more discussion on that. In terms of multifamily units, I heard two, three different approaches that I think there is some level of interest from the council. One is potentially asking all of the new buildings to be designated non-smoking from the get-go. The other one was the idea of requiring buildings of five units or more, because nobody else mentioned the minimum, you did. But there was some discussion of requiring buildings to have designated non-smoking sections where non-smoking tenants could be resided. Five units or more having either a plan or coming with a, some sort of a policy that a segment of the building of a reasonable size would be designated non-smoking and with ways of requiring that and implementing that over some years. That was the only other area that I heard some consensus. Everything else that I heard were, oh, there were two other things, which was Ms. Friedman's idea of a civil enforcement, that the city attorney come back with some analysis for council to recommend. And in addition, I think coupled with that was Mr. Najarian's nuisance definition of nuisance and provisions for tenants to be able to step out of their lease. And the city attorney analyzing that and coming back with some potential options for the council to consider. Those are the only areas that there was some level of consensus that I heard.
Very good, I think you capitalized it just.
The only thing I think maybe just that we can maybe get clarification on is whether for existing units, for the existing apartment buildings or multifamily buildings, whether you want the transition to designate smoking areas to occur over a period of years or through attrition. I think I heard both concepts, and so we probably need a little bit more clear direction.
As units turn over?
So as units turn over, they become non-smoking pursuant to the designation provided by the landlord? Or if you just set a time requirement that in X amount of years?
Look, my problem with both, you know, concepts is how in the world are we going to certify this? How do we, I mean, it's going to be a very difficult situation. I mean, we need to do it. We absolutely need to do it. And then we've gotten enough complaints from people, and those that haven't complained, that we need to do it. The question is, how do we do it and enforce it, Mr. Hagani?
Actually, I think you, your question just highlights what I was going to say. At the moment, coming up with a plan that the staff would have to review and certify and identify and put on record that we would then enforce over time for the number of multifamily buildings that exist in Glendale would be a yeoman's job. I would recommend that the council opt for...
Job?
Yeoman's.
Yeoman's job.
Yeoman, do we have a yeoman?
He's a yeoman.
Weaver was...
I would recommend that if the council would like us to bring at some later future a policy discussion for that, that would be fine. But as a first step, to come up with no end deadline that say that the policy of the buildings should come up with a process of, as the units turn over, making them non-smoking towards having designated smoking and non-smoking areas in the building as a general direction would be something we could work towards without having to go over a review of every building in Glendale that's five units or more and enforcing that. That is a very big job. And I would not be telling you the truth if I said we could take that on right now at this moment.
I think the takeaway for us is that the council's interested in tightening the restrictions on smoking in multifamily properties. There are at least two items that the council has suggested that require considerable legal review before they can be implemented. And also, I think we understand very clearly that you want to see a migration towards fewer smoking units, either through attrition or over time or both. That would take some level of review from the planning division to understand how we actually make that happen in an effective way. That would have to come back to you at a later discussion. But I think the policy direction is clear. Tighten the restrictions for smoking in multifamily properties.
Right.
My question is, what percentage are we talking? If we're doing a no smoking sections, what percentage of units are going to be no smoking? I mean, I'm worried about, if you're talking about a five, let's say a six-unit building, does that become one unit? You know, and if so, there's really no point. So I think we need to decide that.
Let staff come back.
It may very well come back in terms of the effectiveness and the practicality of moving in this direction. That question may be addressed, where the number of units may be a function of how readily we can actually enforce this and put in place that kind of policy. But again, I think the takeaway is that we hear you loud and clear. Give us options for moving in this direction. Because the direction is to increase the restrictions on smoking in multifamily units.
And let's, you know, if you have recommendations about the percentage of units, let's then, I think that should dictate the size, the minimum size.
It could very well.
Because if it's two units side by side, you know, that really doing anybody any help. The other question I have is, let's say you're doing it through attrition, and maybe this isn't something we get into, what the owners of the buildings do, but, and you have those units where you're designated non-smoking units, you've got that one smoker there, and a unit opens up somewhere else in the building that is the smoking building. Does the owner that have an obligation to try to move that person into the smoking area if they agree, you know, kind of how does that work? Because it would seem that they should offer them that unit first and try to get, you know, help create that non-smoking section.
But staff?
Those are precisely the kind of issues that make this very, very difficult. Quite frankly, I feel, I mean, I'm willing to keep moving forward as we have to, but I feel much better about the civil enforcement code and the nuisance per se, where landlords, when you have a non-smoker, a good tenant, and that tenant says, listen, I'm not able to handle this anymore. Oh, by the way, I'm breaking the lease and I'm off. That might open some landlord's eyes and maybe, you know, it's going to be self-enforcing or self-policing.
Well, I'm good with those, but I still want to try to go down that road of the non-smoking sections. I think it's important for people that are in those units now.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that. I think, as Mr. Mayor said, the questions you ask would be the types of questions that we would have to engage in, and that would become a very extensive policy discussion. We could formulate such a discussion and formulate, identify pillars in the discussion, if you will, for like things to hang on to, some principles that we want to introduce in the discussion and then bring it back at a later time. I can tell you that for the purposes of being realistic in terms of what we can take on, in terms of both creating the policy discussion, having sufficient public input in the policy discussion, and then bringing options for you, it could not be for several months to come. It would not be anytime earlier than a year from now, to be completely honest and upfront with you, about the ability to come up with a series of options for you to consider about how do we turn all the multifamily buildings in Glendale move towards a smoke-free or designated smoke-free kind of zones? Because we're talking not only about apartment and rental units, we're talking about ownership units and how that would work out with condos and then with the associations, all the legalities involved, and what that would mean in terms of our land use laws and in terms of our code enforcement. To us, that's a very large discussion, which we're willing to take on. But I must tell you that it would not be anytime soon that we could come back with a report of that magnitude.
And the purpose of tonight is to provide that update, to get this feedback, and then to come back to you at a future date with an ordinance that would reflect that direction. We have an ordinance prepared, if council so chooses, for the very compartmentalized discussion about outdoor dining and smoking, but not on the multifamily, because that is a rather large policy area.
And while I agree with you, Mr. Hagani, that that's going to take a long time. On the other hand, the issue of the civil enforcement code or even the, that's much quicker. Those two are much quicker.
Those are legal issues that could be addressed.
All the new unit, new buildings, that could come back immediately. And there's no change in the hookah designation. So those two things could be cleaned up while you work on the alternatives on the other.
And also, if apartments is easier than condos, which I suspect it will be, they don't have to come back together. You could do one and the other. And I hope that you do engage the associations, the condo associations and the apartment owners, because they may have ideas about ways to implement this that we haven't thought of. I know you're reaching out to other cities that are doing this. I know that there are a lot of cities that are doing this now and have done it.
Can we get an ordinance back on the new buildings?
Yes, we could do that. In fact, if I may, Mr. Mayor, make a recommendation. If the council is interested in taking action on any items that you could take action tonight, I would recommend that you consider the outdoor dining area and whether, what percentage you would like to do that, and the two items that the city attorney would be reviewing to bring back. Those, and then also potentially the action to, all new buildings would be required to be smoke-free. Those we can do tonight, and we can come back to you fairly quickly.
Does that include buildings that are under construction now?
Yes.
It could be however you define it.
Get it on the books.
But again, we only have the one ordinance. So if you want to direct us to bring back the ordinance on new buildings and the private right of enforcement, we could do that relatively quickly. And then the other items can come back when we've had time to study them.
Who runs an agreement?
You've got your direction.
Very good. All right, I want to thank everyone for doing a very good job of presenting their views this evening. And it was a very impressive group of different opinions. Thank you very much.
We'll have a tighter ordinance when we're done.
What's next?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited time is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
All right, David Givorkian, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, city council, Mr. City Manager. I know it's been a really long night, so I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible. I won't take my full five minutes. My name is David, and I'm a resident of Glendale. And I'd like to address the city administration and the community of Glendale. In conformance to our city's long-range strategic plan indicating the public's strong need for greater civic engagement, I'd like to encourage the community to open up discussions with city officials and the city administration to discuss the possibility of adopting a citywide neighborhood council program in the city of Glendale. With so many cities across the state experiencing layoffs and cutbacks to vital city programs, as a result of these tough economic times that we're going through, it is recommended for the city administration to consider supporting neighborhood councils. As we continue to experience the impacts of the economy on the quality of service delivery, neighborhood councils can help create community-level support to ensure a sustainable community for the future. Glendale being one of the largest cities in the county, the city council could enjoy the advantages of neighborhood councils to build stronger relationships with the community and increase solution and consensus-building opportunities. By adopting a citywide neighborhood council program, the Glendale community will experience measurable results by having a meaningful and formal way to participate in the city's strategic planning and policy-setting process. To make things very fair, open, and all-inclusive, an organization called the Glendale Neighborhood Council Commission has been formed, also referred to as the GNCC. It's a local, independent, nonprofit, community organization. It's been formed to provide information, input, and get feedback about a citywide neighborhood council program in Glendale. And as the founding member of the GNCC, I encourage the Glendale community to contact the organization and to city officials to speak about neighborhood councils and how a model could be presented for consideration. GNCC can be contacted by visiting myglendale.org. I'd like to also include that GNCC will be participating in the upcoming Unity Fest this Saturday, September 29. And we'd look forward to providing information and getting community feedback about adopting neighborhood councils in Glendale. So we invite and we encourage feedback and input, and we encourage everyone to actively participate in open dialogue about adopting a neighborhood council program as part of our city's long-range strategic plan civic engagement initiatives. City council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this new idea to the community. Have a wonderful evening.
Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, fellow Glendaleans. My name is Mike Mohill. Over the past 14 years, the quality of life in our Jill City, Glendale, has not improved for many of its citizens. Councilman Frank Quintero has criticized previous councils for approving apartments in South Glendale, apartments with inadequate parking, leading to congested streets, high density of population, and sadly, increases in crime. And as the building craze went forward, promised parks and additional green space for South Glendale was never materialized. Our current council in recent years has decided to change the landscape of our downtown with many new commercial and residential properties, properties unfortunately with inadequate parking and surrounding green belts. Controlled growth is nowhere to be found. Just build, anything goes. Now our downtown area will become the new concrete jungle with inadequate parks and parking, all leading to increases in traffic congestion, gridlock, and crime. Is this why we elected our current council members to change the landscape of our Jill City and diminish our quality of life? Will this become the new normal city manager and council members? I do not think people move to Glendale in order to have the high density and population of a city like New York. The increase in new construction will bring to the city increases in property taxes to help pay for the first and second obligations of government, unfunded and unsustainable wages and pensions for our city employees, and not the needed services like large urban parks, libraries... parks, libraries, infrastructure, maintenance for roads, sidewalks, water sewer, and electricity. I have lived in Glendale for 58 years and presently reside in Glen Oaks Canyon for the past 35 years. I do not like to single out any one council member, but Councilwoman Laura Freeman, in a few short years, has helped change the face of Glendale by approving every apartment and condo development before her, including the corrupt public housing company, ADI. A partial list of the apartments, condos, and lofts that she and her colleagues have approved with minimum parking provided include the Broadway Lofts with 208 lofts on Broadway and Maryland, Courtyard by Marriott Hotel with 173 rooms on Wilson and Central, the Lenley Theater with 42, 42 artists, live-work lofts on Wilson and Maryland, Verdugo Gardens with 220 units on Central New 134 Freeway, Legendary Tower with 72 condos, eight live-work units on Central and California, Lex on, Lex on Orange Grove with 307 units on Lexington with West California, Kenwood Terrace, 35 units on 118 South Kenwood, and Colorado Gardens, 50 units on Cali, on Colorado and Elk Avenue. Tonight, Councilwoman Freeman was the tie-breaking vote that approved another out-of-town developer's Camden USA project with 287 apartments, including an additional 22 low-income units located in South Glendale across from the Glendale Memorial Hospital. She told the public the state law allowed more units if a developer built more low-income housing, but Councilmen Najarian and Manukian both said no to that law. Why didn't Mrs. Freeman? Was it all about the money? About 1,694 apartment units will bring approximately 4,235 new residents to downtown Glendale. When calculating an average of 2.5 people in each one, two, and three-bedroom apartment, the traffic congestion will be even worse than it is today during rush hour on the, at the 134 Freeway, at Brand Central, and Glendale Avenue. Council members enjoy telling the public they are environmentalists who want to promote clean air and parks. However, when they could have turned the corner, when they could have turned the corner property at Wilson Avenue and Brand Boulevard into a beautiful urban park, which would be used in conjunction with this weekend's celebrated annual Unity Festival, they approved instead another six-story building, 235 apartments in the heart of Glendale, Wilson and Brand. Our city manager--
Herbert Milano.
Okay, thank you.
Followed by Margaret Hammond.
Margaret Hammond has left for the night. Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. There are several times whenever I come before the city council and sit and watch the proceedings, and the conversation appears very well-thought-out, the, the debate is, is intelligent, different options are considered, and people are left with a feeling and the impression that the same type of discussion and intelligent conversation takes place for all of the issues. Unfortunately, from my experience, and I think that I've come to at least 500 or 600 council meetings, it isn't that way, not when it comes to making the city staff, particularly police, fire, managers, truly accountable. Accountable to controlling their pay when it comes to the MOUs, accountable to issues about work miss compensation, healthcare, and the other costs that have significantly increased in the past 10 years. And those costs have increased so much that you are pushed continually for more and more development because you need that property tax revenue. That means that that property tax income is not coming really for the purposes of benefiting overall the residents, it's coming primarily to benefit first pensions, and then the salaries, and then the other additional benefits. Let me give an example. Today, you discussed at length all of the issues having to do with smoking for the general public. But have you ever discussed it when it comes to reducing your own health, healthcare costs and reducing the smoking within your own employees, within the employees of the city? Have you taken a proactive action to say, look, in one year, we'd like to be, we'd like to have a smoke-free employment through, all, all around all of the departments in Glendale? Why not? Why not work towards such policies that reduce the healthcare costs that have increased 500% since the year 2000? 500%, much higher than the overall national average on healthcare costs. I looked at those numbers, I can bring them to you again, show them back there on the board, show you the trends. Healthcare costs, work miss compensation, you know, the other issue, the issue of disability retirements, 50% of police and fire retire on disability, and we cannot ask you, and you cannot have you, have those groups to become truly accountable. Police Chief Randy Adams have, by all our interpretation of what he did, a completely bogus disability claim, that he moved a file cabinet in his office and all of a sudden he's got a, and he's a long-distance runner. So for running long distance, he's got no problem, but to retire on a disability, then he's got a disability. And so the taxpayers wind up paying significant amounts for that. When you have these MOUs that do not challenge the policing practically anything that they're asking for, that's a problem. Today, I think we begin to see a little bit of movement of making them accountable for their own health, but even then, you could not approach it to all the policemen. Some people don't want to be accountable, but at the end of the day, who pays the bill? The taxpayer. And with that money is not available, then we cannot have the parks, and with that money is not available, we cannot build the infrastructure. And it's all about the choices that we make. When there is no money available, we don't have the programs for youth that are needed. And so we see this continuation year after year with the core, long-term problems that I studied when I was in college continue. We could not afford the type of programs that would allow us to address issues about youth and have sufficient money for it, but yet, I see this pension list from the Calpers from Glendale, and I'm just astonished. And those are the choices that you've made when you approve the MOUs or when you fail to challenge police and fire because they have the image of safety and the, and the fear of fire that is overextended throughout the community. But that means that we're not going to have the money to fix those problems, and they're fixable, because our budget has grown from around 400 million back in the year 2000 to now 700-plus million. So we've had the money, it's just where it doesn't go. I'd love to see a city where you say, you know, $200,000 maximum per year is the salary that we allow, you know, unless you do something truly exceptional to reduce costs significantly, we can finally take the revenues of the taxes that we bring forth and put them to some really long-term beneficial use that would have an impact on that next generation that comes after us. I come before you in a way to present it, but oftentimes, I, I sit down and I get shut down with some amazingly insane comments. I hope it doesn't happen again.
Then, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.